All right. Welcome, everybody. It's seven o'clock, so I'd like to call the meeting to order, and this time we will start with roll call. Councilmember Als?
Here.
Councilmember Hefty? Councilmember Taylor?
Present.
Vice Mayor Haskell?
Here.
Mayor Wernicke? Present. Our first item here is oral communications, and I just want to make a comment. I know we have a presentation coming up right after oral communications from Mid Penn, and since Mid Penn is not on the regular agenda, oral communications would be the time to make comments for those that are interested in making public comment or oral communications about the Hawthorns Mid Penn projects. So with that, I will open up for anybody in the Karen Askey. Come on up.
Before you start.
Okay, I just, oh my God, I just wanted to let you know that space is filling up fast for Portola Valley Trivia Night. So get those teams formed, or just register yourself and we'll find you a team. It's just about two weeks away, Saturday, February 10th, 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Trivia starts promptly at 7:00 p.m. And I, you know, I'm in charge of the registration and I haven't seen that town council team come through yet. So I'm just going to put that bug in your ear. And to register for everybody listening, go to www-portolavalley.net/trivianight. It's pretty easy to remember. So thank you and hope to see you there. Bye.
Thank you, Karen. Any other hands in the schoolhouse? Come on up, George.
Thank you very much. I've got some remarks about Upton Upzoning.
So because that is on the agenda, unfortunately, I'm going to ask you to make those remarks when we get to that agenda.
Okay, so that will be allowed?
Yes. Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Sounds great.
Thank you, George. Zoom, we have Rita Comas.
Hi, thank you very much for taking my comment. First, I'd like to thank everyone that came out last Monday in between the town hall meeting and the closed library and where I read the biography, the Nobel biography of Martin Luther King Jr. and read the "I Have a Dream" speech. It was incredible, and if you get a chance, if you haven't read it in a long time or just know the snippets, please take the time to read the whole thing and just spend some time being quiet and listening to it. My other comment tonight is, you know, here we are once again at this historic moment where the future landscape of our town will be forever changed. I really hope that this particular agenda item, item number six, happens earlier this evening, perhaps moved up in the schedule. I'm not saying to reschedule the Mid Penn person or to reschedule the person from Animal Control, the reading of that. But, you know, everybody that's online and people that are in the schoolhouse are here to talk about the housing issue. So please don't leave it until everyone's signed off and going to bed at 10 o'clock. But if it can get moved up in the schedule before everything else, I know that the town residents would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. I don't see any other hands raised on Zoom. Well, one more in the schoolhouse.
Hi, everyone. My name is everybody hear me? Great. Hi, everyone. My name is Kevin Joyner, and I'm with Hip Housing. I'm here tonight to share something fun. On behalf of Hip Housing, I would like to thank the Honorable Mayor and the members of the Portola Valley Town Council for your enduring support to our organization. For as a symbol of our appreciation and our partnership, I'm here tonight to present to you our Hip Housing 2024 calendar. Each year, Hip Housing asks children around the county in grades kindergarten to fifth grade to draw a picture of their home and to tell us what their home means to them. This year, we've had over 320 calendar entries, and from these entries, we select 13 winners, 12 for each month, and one for the front cover. My favorite month for this year would be August, and this is for Matthias. He is in the first grade and he's from Half Moon Bay, and again, this is what his home looks like. And his quote is, "My home is a place where my family can get together, where I can feel real love, stay safe, and be myself." Since 1972, Hip Housing has been helping low-income San Mateo County residents to find and maintain housing in one of the most expensive parts of the county. Hip Housing is listed in all 21 housing elements in San Mateo County, including yours, as a trusted affordable housing partner. Last year, we worked with over 3,200 individuals and housed 1,241 people throughout the county. We hope you enjoy the calendar as a beautiful reminder throughout the year of how important housing is to everyone in our county, especially our children. More information about Hip Housing programs and our calendar contest can be found at www hiphousing.org. Thank you, and I hope the rest of the meeting goes well tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any other hands in the schoolhouse or on Zoom for oral communication, so I will close that. And we can move on to our presentation from Mid Penn Open Space District. So I'd like to welcome Joshua Hug. Wherever you're more comfortable.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay, I'll also try to project. Thank you, members of the council and staff for having me tonight. I will try to be pretty brief, knowing that there's sizable items on the agenda. My name is Josh Hug. I am the Governmental Affairs Program Manager for Mid Penn. And we wanted to give you as part of our outreach to the various communities within the district boundaries, we try to do these check-ins to let you know what we're doing. I know we have certain projects like the Hawthorns Project. That has a life of its own, so I'm not going to touch on that. So I'm just going to give you a sampling of some of the work that we're doing on district lands. So see if I can here. Just for your own information, if you didn't know, we are not co-terminist with San Mateo or Santa Clara Counties, so this map gives you an idea of our district boundaries. Our holdings are in dark green. And we've been around for about 50 years. Mid Penn's mission, as you may know, is to acquire a regional green belt, protect and restore the lands with our acquisitions, and then make those lands available for ecologically sensitive public enjoyment and education. As you may know, we annexed into the San Mateo Coast in 2004, where we added agriculture as part of our coastside mission. The district, you may know, is 50 years old, created by voter initiative. We are actually about the same size as San Mateo County with our constituents. We have seven boards of directors. Like many local governments, we are also funded by property tax. We now have 27 preserves between San Mateo and Santa Clara Counties and a little bit of Santa Cruz County, actually. We've preserved over 70,000 acres and provide 200, over 250 miles of trails across our holdings. Our main offices are in Los Altos. We have about 200 employees right now and about 1,000 volunteers, thankfully. And as you may be aware, in 2014, we passed Measure AA, not to be confused with the Bay Restoration Authority Measure AA, but that provided $300 million for us to work on publicly determined priorities. These are just some of the holdings that we have that I thought might be nice to see. El Corte de Madera is very popular with bicyclists, actually. La Honda and its La Honda Creek redwoods and its iconic Red Barn. Russian Ridge is known for its wildflowers. Thornwood is a very small holdings, but offers beautiful forested experiences and views of the valley. And then, of course, Windy Hill, which is within the boundaries of Portola Valley and is a jewel for the region. So just some of the project updates that we, some of the work that we have. Last June, we acquired our 27th preserve, the Cloverdale Ranch Cloverdale Ranch property just south of Pescadero. We're pursuing this acquisition in pieces based on the aggregation process that our partner, the Peninsula Open Space Trust, pieced this together over 20 years, and as such, different holdings have different restrictions on them. So we were able to acquire the first 5,000 acres this past year, and the final portion, which has a mutual water company on it, we're still working through the legal implications of having, of owning that land. But we expect within the next two years to have that resolved. This is just a, just one view of this beautiful property. That also is a significant habitat for the San Francisco Garter Snake. As you know, it's almost unique to this peninsula. This is one of the most significant populations on this property. I'll touch a little bit about wildfire. This is a picture of Mid Penn's staff aiding in the response to the CZU Lightning Complex Fire in 2020 that we all experienced. While it didn't affect our properties, as part of our mutual response, we did assist with containing the spread of the fire. As you may know, the fire hazard severity maps are being updated, and with that, we are, we recently passed a wildland fire resiliency program that contains four different components. Vegetation management. One thing that distinguishes us from a lot of the other agencies that work on vegetation management is that we also incorporate biodiversity goals into our work. As you also may know, California has a lot of fire-dependent, fire-adapted species, so this work also helps to enhance their viability. Redwoods, you know, being a prime example, their cones need fire, low-intensity fire to open up so they can germinate. We have a prescribed burn plan that we hope to pursue, to initiate our first burn in about 10, over 10 years. Hope we hope to initiate that this fall. And we also have pre-fire advisor maps. These are maps of resources on the landscape that help CAL FIRE in their response to any fire that occurs in the region. And then, of course, a monitoring plan after work is done. We are constantly looking at that and making sure that that our work continues to be within acceptable standards. This is just a high-level map of the locations of some of the work that we're doing around vegetation management across the region. Pretty much every property is receiving some level of vegetation management. And this includes both reducing fuel loads, but also things like maintaining escape routes, shaded fuel breaks, things of that nature as well. This is an interesting project that we have at our La Honda, upper La Honda Preserve. That upper region, as you drive down 84, you pass these heavily forested areas. For over a century, they've been managed in one way or another that have created some very dysfunctional situations as far as the health of the forest. So we're embarking upon what they call a restoration forest initiative that will selectively thin and treat the forest with the goal of achieving late serral and old growth conditions. That will help the watershed. It will help make the ecosystem healthier. Large redwoods hold more carbon than any other plant species on the planet, so it'll help to encourage that. It also creates habitat for species like the marble murlet that rely on old growth trees for nesting. And that will initiate a long-term adaptive management program because this, these treatments will manifest themselves over decades. So we will have to be tending to that. This is something else, which is a response to some of the challenges that we have, having some of our preserves close to residential areas. So this is more of an awareness slide. Ranch of San Antonio is probably the one that's most effective. Our predators on the property, we're encountering them. Visitors are encountering them having various cases of mange, which is an indication of rodenticide poisoning. So we are trying to educate the public to find alternatives to using or minimize the use of rodenticides if it's at all possible. We have techniques called integrated pest management that focus on things like exclusion, plugging up holes in your home, how you handle garbage, installing an owl box. Owls are very good at eating loads of rodents, alternatives to rat poison. So this is, this is a campaign that we've initiated with some of the neighborhoods around our preserves. I think this might be the final project. This is our Parisma to the Sea project that is, has been underway for quite some time, but it's a it will offer a skyline to the sea trail where hikers can experience, you know, both redwoods and rural grassland settings all the way out to the coast. And this is just to emphasize the regional nature of some of our preserves and who we're trying to serve with these, with these efforts. You can see that we, through some of our surveys, have shown that we have visitors coming even as far as the Central Valley to visit our Parisma Creek redwoods preserve. And then also, just to put that effort into perspective, this is part of a larger bay-to-sea trail which would ultimately connect the ocean to some of the communities on the Bay Shore. This is our, being 2024, this is the 10th anniversary since the passing of our bond measure. And these are some of the accomplishments that we've had in those 10 years. I won't go through them in detail, but preserving over 8,000 acres of land, opening up 31, over 31 miles of trails, much of which is under construction now, and with much more plans. And then parking areas, trying to find more ways to get the public access to our lands, and of course, the Hawthorns effort is amongst those. So I kind of whipped through that in the interest of time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to field them.
Thank you. That was really helpful to see the broad perspective of the impact you're having in the area. We really appreciate you coming out and giving us the update tonight.
Yeah, and please reach out if you have any questions about any topic.
Use these new mics. Thank you very much. And with that, we will be moving on to the consent agenda. Would like oh, sorry, town manager report. I see it right here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Just have a couple of updates I'd like to give for you in the community. There was question as we get into tonight's discussion about some of our costs and some of the costs that we've incurred. We did go back and Cindy did provide us with some analysis of the cost of our housing element, and we have spent about $750,000 so far on our housing element. And it could be easily reached $1 million if we were to account for everything for the past couple of years. So I know that we've been talking about that cost, just to have that. So we know we're working off one number, the number we would use is 750,000. Did want to remind the community about our commission openings. We do have planning commission and ASC openings. We have posted that on our website, on the forum and other places, and we are scheduled for February 5th interviews for that. So encourage the community to apply for those openings. I am happy to announce, and George Savage is here, and he's hearing this for the first time from me as well, and that I am happy to announce that we do have our audit scheduled for fiscal year 2021. Part of one of the commitments that you knew that I had working with Krish was to come back with some deliverables, and the first deliverable that we're able to announce is that our auditing firm will come out in March and start the process of getting us caught up on our audit review. And so the audit review for fiscal year 2021 will be in March, and then we'll move on to the next year after that. So I'm very happy to announce that and wanted to thank staff and Krish for helping us get to that milestone, if you will. Another major announcement I wanted to make is that we are installing internet backup for town hall. We're going with the company Starlink, and we're in the process of getting that installed this week. And so by the end of next week, we should have internet backup for all of town hall, and that's been a major initiative from EPC and also one of my smaller priorities is getting that up and running. So I wanted to thank staff for that as well. We are working with Priory School and volunteers. There's interest on having Priory School students volunteer for different events and endeavors that we have here in town hall. So council and commissions and all of our other commissions, if you have any need or desire to have our students help out in the community, please let me know, and we can certainly connect you with Priory, and I'm sure you have your contacts as well. But there's an interest in that, and I certainly support that. We had a meeting a couple of days ago with Priory regarding that. And then, as you know, we continue to restructure our town hall. We talked about our refocus and restructure. Obviously, restructure is the harder part of the endeavor that we're getting through, and so I'll be making some announcements as we go regarding some of the restructures that we're making within town hall. And as you know, right now, we have our Director of Planning and Building position that is open and posted. And so we're receiving applications for that, and hopefully we'll get some some good bites on that, and we can move forward with that in February. And then in the next coming week or so, I will also be posting for Director of Finance moving forward on that position as well, to get that started and be actively recruiting for Director of Finance. Those are my updates for today.
Thank you. Really appreciate all that progress on infrastructure issues, too. Thank you. And now we can move on to consent agenda. Is there any public comment for consent agenda items? Karen, come on up.
This is just something I'm curious about. On the warrants list, there's a large payment for Good City Company. And I noticed there was a large one the last meeting as well, and I also noticed that our former town manager, Jeremy Dennis, is on staff there. And I'm just wondering about the pocherness of that.
Thank you, Karen. I don't see any other hands in the schoolhouse, and there are none on Zoom, so I'll bring it back to council. I believe we have at least one item, right, Craig, that you might want to pull?
Like to pull 5D?
I have a question in the words.
Okay. So we are pulling item 5B and 5D, and so is there a motion to approve 5A and 5C?
So moved.
Well, call. Councilmember Als? Councilmember Hefty? Councilmember Taylor?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Haskell?
Hi.
Mayor Wernicke?
Hi.
Those items are approved. Greg, would you like to make your comments about item 5B?
It's a pretty simple one. Judith and I talked, and I'm going to take the liaison position for PCE.
The alt.
The alt, yeah, sorry.
Okay, that sounds good. So any other comment on that item? Somebody want to make a motion to approve?
With that amendment, I'll move to approve.
Second. Call vote. Councilmember Als?
Hi.
Councilmember Hefty? Councilmember Taylor?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Haskell?
Hi.
Mayor Wernicke?
Hi.
Motion passes.
And my question on the warrant list does go at one point, and this is probably something you're thinking has a place in your getting organized, but at some point, it would be very helpful to be able to know what the planning-related services, which are, you know, ticking along at a healthy rate, what they're for, and how they're like, how to think about them, because all we have is the bottom line here. And I do think with a run rate like this, it would be good to have visibility into the categories and expected. Like, is it all for the housing element? What are, what are the expected expenses? I personally would benefit from that understanding because the number you said at the beginning of this meeting, 750, and then the run rates I'm seeing last month and this month, I do think there's a need to look at being more transparent about that. That being said, I know we're dealing with a lot, so it's more a is it realistic to request that sometime? And I would defer to you on when that would be realistic. We could start having more information on that.
Yeah, I think we can certainly take that into consideration. It doesn't necessarily have to be formal. Maybe it's something in my 10 town manager report to say, by the way, you see this charge kind of thing to keep it as an informal item. So we can take a look at how we can break that down moving forward. So noted.
Yeah, thank you. That's, that's all I have.
All right. Item, is there a motion to approve item 5B?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Well, call.
Don't forget, Mary, your microphone to turn on.
Councilmember Als?
Hi.
Councilmember Hefty?
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Haskell?
Hi.
Mayor Wernicke?
Hi.
Motion approved. So now we can move on to our regular agenda, item six. And we have our interim town, planning manager, planning director, John Biggs and Adrian. Thank you for being here, guys.
Good evening, Mayor Wernicke. Can you hear me okay? All right. Good evening, Mayor Wernicke, members of the city council. I am here with our senior planner, Adrian Smith, to do a presentation this evening on the housing element with the recommendation for adoption. We also have joining us our two members of the consultant team to help us with the presentation and answer questions at council. That is Curtis Banks and Carla Violet, that have been, along with Adrian, working on the housing element since the town started developing the housing element and reaching out to the community to get its input on this. It's been a long process, and we have the housing element before you this evening that has been recommended by the planning
It's been a long process and we have the housing element before you this evening that has been recommended by the planning commission, but also includes the latest modifications that have been directed at us by the State Department of Housing of Community or how State Department of Housing and Community Development or HCD. I'll use that short acronym for that. Adrian and I are going to do a two-part presentation this evening and it'll start with Adrian, who will go through the housing element and take us up to the point where the planning commission considered the element and made their recommendation. So I will turn the microphone over to Adrian. Adrian.
Thank you very much, John, and good evening, Mayor and council members. All right. So again, the purpose of this item is for council to have a look at all the changes that we've made to date. And that's since the July 25th HCD letter. And of course, there's going to be some general plan amendments. And again, we've taken a light touch with those just.
Adrian, sorry to interrupt you. We're going to switch over to the hardwired microphone. That one is working, but it's very light. Sorry for the interruption. We anticipated this and left the court long for tonight.
Okay, how are we doing? That's good. All right. Thank you. All right. So once again, the item before you this evening, we're taking a look at the housing element and considering it for adoption. What we're going to be doing is reviewing the changes that we've made to date. And those changes start in response to the July 25th letter from HCD all the way to where we are tonight. And there are going to be some general plan amendments, of course. We've taken a light touch throughout. We've only made those amendments to the general plan as necessary to implement the housing element. And after we have gone over all of that, council can perhaps consider a formal action to adopt a resolution to approve the housing element. Finder of this document, you've seen it a million times, but there's mentioning once more. So again, we have met about 47 times to discuss various elements of the, of the housing element and general plan amendments. And that's up to about 148 hours now. Hopefully, we're in the home stretch and we can stop showing you this chart. We'll see. All right. So we're going to begin with changes to the housing element. And these again, were in response to July 25th comment letter. They've been reviewed by planning commission and recommended for adoption. So what we've got first is, these are the main comments, by the way. The complete matrix goes over all the comments from HCD, but these are, these are the most substantive ones. So one thing the reviewer asked us to do was increase certainty and timing and availability of pipeline projects. The reviewer was quite firm on that. We needed specifics, so we did fill those out. We also tweaked the opt-in diversification program. Of course, we're going to get into the need of that later. If we had changed it to a pilot program, we had a unit cap, but we've changed course on that in response to HCD. John will talk about that. But it is still categorized under affirmatively furthering fair housing and AFFH program. And it's meant to help disperse housing throughout the town. It's not counted in our arena, but the unit count production will be reported to HCD on an annual basis. We also had to change our multifamily dwelling unit density. We had had a cap or pardon me, a max. And our reviewer said, you actually have to provide a range. So we agreed upon the range of 20 to 23 units. That was required of us simply because we didn't submit or rather have our certified housing element by January 31st of last year. So just one of those consequences that we had to deal with, but we did settle on that range. The reviewer also asked for tweaks to our ADU programs. And the idea there is if our production falls short, the town has to review a strategy, review our current strategies and potentially identify additional sites to accommodate that shortfall. That one's pretty straightforward. We made minor changes to Dorothy Field and Open Space Site, the program. And to clarify, that was to clarify timing on certain program steps. Again, that one of the trends was the reviewer wanting more specificity on timing and just more certainty that the project would develop. We also tweaked our arena a little bit. We dropped the town's previous total unit potential and the percent of buffer. And again, that was agreed upon with the reviewer. We made a modification to the Willow Commons Pipeline Project. It's currently under construction, but they did actually change their unit count a little bit. So that's reflected in our arena. We also reclassified 4394 Alpine Road, that housing site from multifamily to mixed use. And that was with, in consultation with the property owner. We also removed the opt-in program from the arena and we were able to offset those 10 units by adding in an additional 10 ADUs. So again, there are some amendments we had to make to the general plan to ensure conformance with our housing element. Again, this was reviewed by the planning commission. So we made some changes to our comprehensive plan map. We changed 4388 Alpine, that's the Willow Commons Project, from local shopping and service to mixed use. And 4394 was designated as multifamily and we switched that to mixed use as well. The Nathurs, and that of course followed through into the Nathurs Triangle area plan map. So for consistency, we had to update that. And then for our land use element, again, because we changed to a range in dwelling units for multifamily, we had to carry that through. We also revised our dwelling units for mixed use for three to six. We also had to change some text as well to for multifamily medium to say no more than 23 dwelling units per acre. And that reflects that range of 20 to 23 units. And then new for tonight for our opt-in program. And this is in response to the most recent HCD comments, we had to remove the unit cap. So that is reflected in the land use element as well. Oh, I should flag in your packet, the track changes didn't show up. Unfortunately, I apologize for that. It's very limited. The only new change since you saw, since you last saw the land use element was just changing this opt-in language to reflect the current ask from HCD. So the planning commission also did make some recommendations for changes and that's reflected in the housing element, the current housing element draft as well. They identified several instances that they wanted to fine tune the language and just improve overall specificity and clarity. And so one of those examples, there's several instances, but one example is a simple revision of describing the status of the environmental review for the Sanford Wedge Project. We just wanted to be a little bit more accurate on the exact status. So that was great. We carried that through. One of the other things we did was reinstate several sentences to the supportive housing overlay for 4394 Alpine Road. For that particular housing site, the property owner wanted those sentences reinstated. Staff had simply removed them, we thought, just for simplicity's sake. The property owner felt strongly, planning commission agreed and staff was happy to add those back in. So you'll see those again. And then there's just simple cleanup of typographical errors that showed up. And we do, if anybody catches anything else in the public or on council, please do let us know. And we'll carry that into the draft that we have. So I will pass it to John.
Thank you, Adrian. Now I get the pleasure of kind of walking through the council, our interactions with HCD since November 2023. And in November 2023, at the end of that month, we thought that we were in really good shape. After you adopted the housing element in May of 2023, you know that the, the town submitted the housing element to HCD for review. And intent was to hopefully obtain certification of that. But instead of certification, we got the letter in July of 2023 that listed out a number of additional modifications that HCD wanted to see made to the housing element. And staff took that up with our consultant team. And we reached out to our HCD reviewer and began a dialogue with HCD so that we could get the changes that HCD wanted incorporated into the housing element, all the while being mindful of the unique characters of Portola Valley. So there were instances where we pushed back. We thought, as I mentioned earlier, that we had arrived at a successful change to our housing element, had included all of the elements that HCD wanted to see. HCD asked us to get us, get them a copy of the housing element there at the end of November. And we took that as a good sign and in progress forward. So we moved on to the planning commission. And as Adrian noted, the planning commission took up consideration of the housing element at their meeting on the 10th of December. After they reviewed and recommended the housing element to you, the town council. And just before your, your map, your meeting on the 10th of this month, we got an email from HCD. And not technically a letter, but more of a series of tables that listed out additional alterations that they wanted to see made. That came in on the 8th of January this month. And those alterations were pretty minor from a staff standpoint. There were some clarifications in addition of some information which supported things like some of the state housing laws, just a kind of check or back to those state housing law elements. But the most significant of the changes that they were requesting, as Adrian mentioned, was to our opt-in program. In that opt-in program, they wanted to see modified from one that would allow across the certain number of single family residential sites in town that met certain safety criteria and would allow for up to four dwelling units on the site. They wanted to see a mix or blending of the opt-in program with the SB9 program. And initially, they were requesting that the minimum lot size be changed from one acre down to a half acre. We immediately pushed back on the half acre suggestion by HCD. And we got some not very direct answers from them. They indicated that it was possibly acceptable. And there were some exchanges back and forth between our HCD reviewer and staff, both, both in person at Zoom meetings and, and online through email communications. The final version of the, the opt-in program that we provided to HCD did reflect a one acre and HCD got back to us and said that was, quote, generally acceptable to HCD. So again, a little bit of a soft response, not anything that I would you know, necessarily take to the bank and on, but it was a response and that was a response I thought we should bring forward to the town council. So at least we're at, at one acre. The, the. Thank you. The thing that HCD is trying to achieve with this change into the opt-in program is that they are trying to achieve housing mobility. In other words, opening up our single family residential neighborhoods to others that may not necessarily have an opportunity to live in these neighborhoods. And they want the town to incorporate programs or policies that go beyond SB9, which is the, the, the state law that allows a basically a number of dwelling units, in addition to potentially some auxiliary dwelling units to be constructive on the site or the division of a site into two lots at a ministerial level. They felt that by combining these two, we were exceeding the requirements of SB9 or the opportunities SB9 provided. But we have in our review of the H, excuse me, the HCD language, found that it does result in some numbers or increases in housing opportunities that we didn't think or weren't expecting as when we first took a look at the, the, the language HCD provided. So I prepared a chart that shows a comparison between three different types of housing products or housing programs. We have in the first column, or excuse me, the second column in this chart, the SB9 regulations, which is a set of regulations that I mentioned would allow up to no more than four dwelling units on a site. And it can be a combination of primary units or principal dwelling units plus accessory dwelling units. Even if you were to divide that one site into two, which SB9 permits, you'd still only be permitted to have four resulting dwelling units across those two sites. With your opt-in program, that permitted four dwelling units on a site. And it was going to be a program that we were going to, once housing element was adopted and certified, develop a set of zoning regulations that would identify the design and site development standards that in application for the opt-in program would be reviewed against by our planning commission for the safety standards and our ASC for the site and design standards. And again, that program limited development on one of those opportunity sites to just four dwelling units, no more. Now we get to HCD's blending of our SB9 program and our opt-in program. And it's a little challenging to read, but what it results in is for this program, if a lot were to remain undivided, so no one was good to go through the subdivision process that SB9 provides, a person would be allowed to build, excuse me, seven dwelling units on that site. A combination of the primary units or the principal units plus additional accessory dwelling units, either the standard accessory dwelling unit or a junior accessory dwelling unit. If that same lot were to be subdivided, then that, the, the resulting housing unit count that would be allowed under HCD's suggested changes would be eight total units. So you could have four units on one site and four units on the second site. And we can go over the language if you'd like that HCD has recommended. But I wanted to make sure you were aware of this change and the implications for the town of this change by the, by the modification of language by HCD. We just wanted to quickly, and you've heard this before at a number of presentations, and we shared this with the planning commission. There are some consequences, potential consequences for not, not adopting the the housing element prior and not getting it certified prior to January the 31st. HCD, we are, you know, the goal here at the staff level was to give the town council some options to at least have an opportunity to approve it or adopt the housing element and get in front of HCD, which would potentially leave open the option of HCD to certify the housing element before the 31st. If it doesn't certify the housing element before the 31st of January, anything after that date, any certification by HCD after that date would require certification by not, of not only the housing element, but also the, they would want to see the town's approved zoning code amendments that are reflected in the housing element. So both of those would be required by HCD in order for them to certify our housing element. I, I mentioned a little bit ago about potential consequences of not having the housing element certified. There's the, the builder's remedy where a builder can come in and under certain circumstances, get a approval for their project. You are recruiting for a new planning and building director. So it'd be nice to have this completed before that recruitment process gets fully underway and that interviews take place. There's the outside chance of civil lawsuits. And also outside chance of the Attorney General or HCD enforcement division taking some kind of action against the community. Finally, just wanted to note that we are in the, or already in one year of an eight-year housing cycle. So, so time is moving on as we, you know, go through and, and struggle with HCD to try and get these, the language appropriate and ready for them to certify. Thank you. Moving forward, if we are going to go on the, continue on the path that we have laid out, our plan is to, starting in February, take our zoning code amendments to the planning commission so that they can begin their public review process. Our consultant, I believe, is pretty set to go with getting those out in front of the community for review. And then naturally, once the planning commission gets, makes a recommendation on those, we'll be taking it to town or bringing it to town council for approval, which should be occurring in the month of March. That kind of wraps up our presentation. And both Adrian, myself, and our two consultant staff members are available to answer questions that the council may have.
Mayor, if I may, thank you, John, and thank you, Adrian and staff for that. One thing that John is very good at is giving the very factual, level-headed, you know, response. And that's what we've asked him to do. I, I get the pleasure of, because I can't add expertise, I want to add emotion. In that, we as staff are very frustrated. We're very frustrated, very frustrated. In that we as staff are very frustrated. We're very frustrated, very disheartened in this process. It's been very discouraging with our meetings with HCD. It's not fair. It's not fun. And we share the same sentiment that you may share as council and the community and you're here tonight. So I really do think we really are all on the same page in our frustration of this process, the frustration of some of the what we thought would be some fair negotiations or open negotiations the past couple of weeks that have not panned out. And we would have handled this differently had we known that. And so we kind of are where we are tonight. But I wanted to add that emotion because I know we share that. I know the community shares that. But I think for the first time, we're all feeling that. And we want to get this done, but we want to get it done right. And we want to make sure that we convey to HCD what we want as Portola Valley. Knowing our place in the state, knowing our place within the law and all the different pieces, but also acknowledging that this opt-in piece is problematic. And that's before council, that's before you tonight. But we wanted, I just wanted to share that we as staff are, are, share that frustration and that, that piece is what really needs to be discussed tonight as we move forward. So. Thank you.
Questions?
On the slides for the opt-in program, you mentioned that the numbers are not, don't, are not part of our arena. Does that mean they're not counted in our housing element? Or does that mean, I mean, I assume that if someone were, if this were to go forward and someone were to develop under it, those, those units that were developed would count towards our arena allocation this coming cycle? Is that correct?
That is correct. We would count them in the annual report that we prepare to HCD, but they are not being required as part of the, the arena numbers there. This is HCD's effort to have towns and cities go beyond what the current regulations SB nine rules was permit.
So they're, they're, they're telling us that they want us, they want the program unlimited, but they, they're not gonna, knowing that they're the numbers that we, we have no idea how many units it'll, it'll produce. Is that, I mean, they're, they're, they're telling us to put it in, but they're not telling, they're not going to give us any credit for being in there. Is that?
Yeah, and you'll, you'll notice in the, as part of that revised program, they do have a metric of, I think it's three three low, three moderate, moderate and three above moderate housing units, which is just basically a measuring stick to see how well the program is doing. But it doesn't really go towards those Rena allocations that, that we have specifically go towards.
But for example, if we were falling short on ADU production, but we got, say, 20 units from opt-ins, that would, I mean, it would, it would actually be helpful to us in terms of accountability in the cycle.
It, it would be. Yeah. And I think it would be something when they review the next housing, go through the next housing cycle, they'd look back and say, okay, well, it was a successful program.
Go with one question. The zoning code with this opt-in, how, how on earth is it going to change the zoning to council opt-in in all what neighborhood?
That, that, that's going to be a bit of a challenge because with the way HCD has worded the opt-in program, combining it with SB nine, you're looking at more housing units on one existing site than than the town had anticipated and had been working on. So as the town goes through the development of those site and design standards, it will have to keep in mind all of the various constraints that a property may present. How are you going to fit? For example, eight dwelling units on a site, provide the onsite parking, provide the onsite circulation, provide the you know, the safe access for buyer or rescue departments to service the property. So that's all, I, I'm sure we will be taking a very close look at some good examples, existing sites and how to best develop a range of standards so that those could be developed in line with what HCD recommends. But I, I'm not I, I'm not gonna, you know, hand you a bouquet of roses and say it's gonna be an easy task, and I think it's gonna be a bit of a challenge.
Or does it mean we're just getting rid of zoning altogether?
Pardon? Would you?
Is, I mean, does it amount to getting rid of zoning altogether to have this opt-in?
No, you can still, still have standards. It's just going to be, you're gonna, you're gonna be trying to fit more pieces in a given area than you had anticipated. And how is all of that gonna work together comprehensively in a a manner that is, is reflective of, of the town?
Is it possible just to submit it without the opt-in at all?
You know, I don't think it would be possible to submit it without the opt-in program because I, I, I did ask the reviewer point blank, you know, could we, could we submit this without the modifications that you're proposing? And the answer was no, we would not certify your housing element. But I do believe that there's maybe an opportunity to push back on HCD a little bit and rather than the numbers that are in the language presented by HCD tonight, maybe we could ratchet that goes back a little bit. Consider them and submit them with lower numbers and submit it to the state and see what the state has to say. Rather than seven or eight units, maybe you get five and four or five, five and six, something like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I have three questions. What I'm gonna do is just ask all three of them. Okay. Then we can kind of go through them. So the first one is, we talk about dwelling units, but I find that a little bit confusing because there's primary dwelling units and then there's ADUs and JADUs. And certainly when I think of the opt-in, when we originally were talking about it, that was for primary residents. Whereas a lot of the SB nine stuff is a primary resident and an ADU or a JADU. So if, as we go through this, it would be helpful to sort of distinguish a primary dwelling unit versus an ADU because there are severe limitations on both ADUs and JADUs in terms of size. So, so I'd like to understand that a little bit better. And then that ties into my next question is, I guess I would like to see the HCD language to understand. I, I still find the seven versus eight confusing. I, I don't quite understand where they're coming from. Particularly the seven on the undivided property. I think I understand the eight is sort of you divide it in half and then you put four and four. But I don't understand where seven comes from on the undivided. So that would be helpful. And then my last question, I think is more to Catherine, which is, given, as I understand this, the cap removal and this modified language to combine these didn't go before the PC. This came afterwards. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes.
Right. So this feels pretty substantial in terms of its change. Can we actually go forward with this without having this go back to the planning commission? So those are my three questions. I'll let you guys decide the order to, to answer them.
I mean, do you want me to go start with the questions you've asked?
However, you guys want to do.
Okay, let's, let's, let's take them in order in the distinctions. You bring up a very good question about housing unit definitions. And this morning I spent a lot of time taking a look at the HCD SB nine regulations and they break up housing units into, I guess, two categories. One, they define as a primary unit. So that would be something like a single-family dwelling. A dwelling you would find in a duplex or a triplex. Each of those would be a primary unit. And then they go on and talk about accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. I don't have the, the, the lots or the, the square footage distinction between accessory dwelling, or I don't know the off the top of my head, I don't know the, the square footage maximum for an accessory dwelling unit. But I know that a junior accessory dwelling, dwelling unit can be no more than 500 square feet. Needs to be carved out of a residence. So it cannot be detached where accessory unit, accessory dwelling unit can be attached. And the junior accessory dwelling unit can have shared kitchen facilities. It doesn't have to have independent kitchen facilities. So that's the distinction. HCD in its guidance document states that for SB nine projects, you can have on a single-family site, an R1 site, two primary units. So you could have two detached single-family dwellings, or you could have, in this example, a duplex. Each unit in that duplex would be the primary unit. On top of that, you could have one accessory dwelling unit and one junior accessory dwelling unit. So this is for an undivided site. So on that one undivided site, you could have four units. If you divide the site and have two, you can have either two primary units on each of the lots or one primary unit on each of the lots plus an accessory dwelling unit or a junior accessory dwelling unit. And there's some more combinations of that that I'm not, I'm not going to go into, but the end result is that you can have no more than four units in, four is a kind of an umbrella term that all, or four units is an umbrella term that we're, we'll use right now that covers both the primary units plus the accessory and junior accessory dwelling units.
Right. So SB nine, the max you're gonna get is four dwelling units. And it also, as I understand it, it's also the max is two primary dwellings.
Yes.
Right. I mean, it may be only one if you want to go with more ADUs, but the most primaries you would have done would have been a primary, two ADUs and a JADU. Like that's in theory, something you could do?
No, I don't think that scenario would work. I think you'd have to have at least one primary unit on each of the two sites. And then you could have the junior AD, junior ADU or the ADU on each of those sites with the primary unit.
But still the max is two primary units on SB nine?
Yes.
Okay.
A total of four, four units on the site.
Okay. Versus the opt-in.
And versus the opt-in and Adrian is going to, has brought the language up on this. Yeah, we're gonna bring it up on the screen. And this is, this is the language that HCD has provided. It says that properties.
So, so before we did, so the opt-in plan, which was what we wrote, would allow for four primary units, right?
Correct.
Or some combination of primary and ADUs or just four primaries? I'm, I'm just trying to remember.
I was looking at it as just for primary units. I don't believe that the original crafting of the opt-in program allowed for ADUs. I, I think the intent was to provide an opportunity to allow more primary units on the site, maybe with a little different, yeah.
Right. Yeah. Some kind of EDU effectively. Yeah.
Exactly.
All right. All right. And now go ahead with the language where they're trying to combine these two together into the Frankenstein.
So, so we have up on the screen the, the first highlighted portion of this, this paragraph is, which is what HCD has, has given us.
Can you make it bigger?
Oh, sure. So, so this is the language we have up on the screen that HCD provided. And it reads properties that are eligible for SB nine and this opt-in program will be permitted to either A, develop three units through SB nine slash ADU law and four units through the opt-in program. So the three plus the four is the seven. Or B, subdivide a site and develop two units per lot along with one ADU and one JADU, for a total of eight units on each site. So two lots, four units on each site, a total of eight. Let me go back.
And the word unit here is, is basically a primary. Well, like two units per lot with an ADU and a JADU. So that, at least that unit is a primary.
Yes, yes. I would say that those are primary.
And the one above develop three units. Is that three primaries or is that one primary and then two ADUs or an ADU, JADU?
I, I would say that the three units through SB nine ADU law are the three ADU, JADU units and four units through the opt-in program would be primary units.
Okay. And this is on a divided lot or this is?
On the undivided lot.
Okay. So this is an undivided lot.
Right.
Okay. So that's where your, your seven is coming from on an, an undivided lot.
Exactly. And I should go back in, I, I think this is how each, and, and part of the confusion is you read the SB nine regulations and you read four lots or four dwelling units total, two lots, two units on each, one a primary, one a ADU or JADU. All of a sudden, HD, HCD throws in three units here. And the SB nine, SB nine regulations say that cities must allow two units on a site. However, it doesn't permit prohibit a city from allowing additional units. And what you are looking at here is an effort by HCD to require this town of Portola Valley to allow more than two units on a site through this program. So it's a little, it took me a while. I've been doing this a long time to grasp what was, what was being done here, but it, it kind of gelled for me this morning and helped me develop that, the table that I shared with, with all of you. So again, you're looking at now an undivided site under the, this opt-in program of having seven units and a divided site of having four units. Council member Hupdi brought up a minute ago about, you know, do we have to have this opt-in program? I think yes is the, the answer to that. But maybe we look at this and say, we go back to two units or one unit or, or two units and maybe three units through that little A subdivision or, or three units per lot or two units per lot through the subdivision B of that language. Something for the council to consider.
And, and what's their justification for if you do a subdivision of saying that now you have to allow two primaries? Because if I understood, the first one, we weren't, if that developed three units was actually one primary plus some form of ADUs. And this second one seems a big step up, which is two primaries on the subdivided and then the ADUs that go with it.
I, I think this is an example of HCD trying to force cities to provide housing units above and beyond SB nine, above and beyond what the Rena requirements are to increase the mobility, quote mobility of, of housing in, in community. So, you know, we've been told that SB nine by itself is just not going to cut it. We want to see above and beyond SB nine in order for a town to get its housing element certified. So I think this is, this is very reflective of, of that philosophy, that intent on the part of the state.
Right. And I guess the thing about the B is, it doesn't really seem like it's related to opt-in at that point. It's no longer four units. I mean, it's it's two, I mean, are they just trying to say when you divide the, we were gonna allow four primaries before. So if you divide it, you get two in each slot, but in addition to the four, you get to have ADUs and JADUs. Do you think that was the reasoning that?
I, I think they, they pivoted from the opt-in program and saw it as an opportunity to get the town to go above and beyond SB nine. And, and this, this, and I, I, you know, we were working with HCD staff in kind of a flurry. Getting close to publication of the packet and we were pushing HCD staff for answers. Maybe they didn't even carefully look at this when they crafted it and sent it our way. So maybe that gives us an opportunity to send them back something a little bit different.
Yeah. And that's what I was wondering. It seems like maybe we could potentially reword some of this because some of it even seems a little ambiguous to me. And even the first one, the and four units, I mean, it could be on an undivided lot, you can do the first part of A or the second part of A, not both. I mean, and again, I'm, I know that and normally means both, but maybe we go back and say, well, if it's undivided, you will allow three units on there, which would be more than normal. Or we'll go with our regular four. I mean, I don't know. The whole thing just seems sort of weirdly written.
So especially at the, the late hour that we received it.
Yeah. Yeah, exactly. So, okay. Well, thank you. I mean, I now understand the seven and the eight. So then I guess my last question.
Yeah, thank you. So your last question was in regards to what qualifies as a substantial modification that would require a remand back to planning commission. And I'll just say that our housing element team was very mindful of this, um, this requirement. And unfortunately, there's not a lot of guidance in the law over what that means. There is only one published decision. It says what it doesn't mean, uh, which is somewhat helpful. But, um, that's a case involving, um, a, a, a project where the EIR was changed between the planning commission and the city council. And, um, the court just said, well, um, changes to the EIR doesn't, is, is not a substantial modification to the project that would require remands to the planning commission. That's not that helpful in our context. So, um, so then it really comes down to, um, you know, our, our practice, um, John has a lot of experience, um, dealing with this provision. And, uh, what we observed was that the opt-in program, um, is not new. It is an existing program. This is a change to it, but it's a program that was, um, considered, you know, and analyzed at length, um, at the planning commission level in the community, whether it's going to be, uh, four or six, whether it be cap, no cap. So, uh, that was one factor that we considered. Um, I think in contrast, if we were considering, um, adding a, a whole new program or, um, identifying a, a whole new opportunity site. Uh, I think that would, would likely cross the threshold to be a substantial modification that would require remand to, to planning commission. Here you always have the discretion, um, to, uh, to, you know, remand it back to planning commission. Um, if you, you know, if you feel like there are additional details, additional analysis that planning commission, um, should do or you know, would be helpful to do, um, then that is, is always, um, is always an option. Um, I wanted to say one more thing, and I apologize if you already mentioned this in your, um, in your presentation. But, um, we also looked at sort of the scope of parcels that would be, um, subject to the opt-in. And I'll just ask our team to make sure to get this right, but it's my understanding that there are, um, 1,820 parcels townwide. Um, and there are 135 parcels, um, that would be eligible. In other words, would are one acre or more. Um, so that's about seven percent of parcels in, in the town that would be eligible, um, for opt-in. Um, and also note that all of those parcels, um, are already eligible, um, for SB nine. So they already could, um, do the four units, um, unless there's an exemption for very high fire, well, very high, um, uh, wildfire risk or, or other exemptions. But essentially, you know, those could already do the, um, the four units with the SB nine program.
Yeah. So I guess what I'm looking for your guidance on is removing the cap. I can understand how that in it's some lethal level is not substantial. And since that was discussed at planning commission, they decided they wanted to go with the cap, but it has been discussed there. But this, what I'm calling this sort of Frankenstein combination of SB nine and the opt-in, um, I'm not sure that anybody's considered eight per, you know, um, lot that was subdivided. And, and I, that's where it feels problematic to me. So am I, i- i- is there a path forward, given this seems pretty substantial and significant?
Well, I guess I would recommend considering what, um, John had alluded to earlier, um, which is, is there a, um, number of units that has been considered already by planning commission? I think they have considered six, for example, um, for the opt-in and maybe, maybe I'm mistaken about that, but I think there, there have been other numbers that have been considered. And so there, there may be some modifications that you could make to satisfy yourself that this would not require. The remand.
Great. Thank you.
Can I quickly follow up on that, on one of the things? That, that combination, the, the seven or eight units, has H, has that been, have they asked for that or proposed it anywhere else in California?
Not that I am aware of. I haven't, you know, looked at a whole lot of different, uh, housing elements, but not sound that I could have given it how quickly I'll go camp last minute. So.
Well, I also think that there are other jurisdictions that have proposed opt-in. I mean, it's, it was pretty unique to us.
Yeah. No, I, I don't think that is. I'm just, my point is just, it's, it's sort of unprecedented.
Right.
I feel like we're being treated singled out or something there. So.
Well, and I feel what got lost here was when we originally proposed the opt-in, it was more of a PDU style, it'd be four primaries and that we could potentially relax some of the restrictions so that you could create like a cluster of housing. Um, because one of the things that came up when I was a planning commissioner was some of the residents said, you know, we'd really like to downsize. And the idea that if we had a property and we could cluster the four houses relatively close together on the property, that that would both make it better for the neighborhood because you'd be farther away from the borders of the property. And so that was kind of the goal of the opt-in was to actually put in better housing than just random SB nine subdivision. And that's kind of where we were going. And, and this combination somehow seems like it's completely lost that because now I struggle to understand the undivided, you got SB nine and then you have this, and then you have the opt-in. Then if you have the PDU sort of, um, ability to say, oh, well, I'd like to cluster, you cluster the opt-in part, but not the SB nine part. So this is where it gets pretty muddy for me pretty quickly.
Craig, I just want to keep it unquestioned. Someone come back to, that's okay. Um, Judith?
Yeah. Uh, a request for Catherine, I have to recuse myself if the net worst properties come up in any way that would trigger that need. So let me know if that happens. All right. So just following up on the planning commission standard, who decides the substantial modification?
Uh, it's a staff recommendation. Ultimately, it is your discretion.
Okay. So the council needs to make that based on its standard. If you got it wrong, so, so can you get it wrong if it's in our discretion? And if you can get it wrong, what's the downside there? Because John put up a slide that said all the bad things that can happen if we don't certify. I want to make sure we're aware of any, maybe there's nothing, but anything bad that can happen if we go forward.
Yeah. Well, like I said, there's only one, um, case I'm aware of, and it found, um, that the council got it right. So I suspect that, um, in, uh, in theory, a court could determine, um, that the council got it wrong. And then would likely move on to determine whether it was, um, prejudicial, um, for the council to, um, go ahead and vote on the project without remanding it to planning commission. And so there, the court might say, well, you got it wrong, but it wasn't actually prejudicial. For X, Y, Z reasons, uh, planning commission has considered similar things or what have you. But if it were prejudicial, then it would be remanded back to council to remand back to the, the planning commission for a do-over.
Okay. And that's actually getting ahead of where I was going because the question is who can sue for what, not what a court would eventually decide if it was given that. So I presume, is it a civil? Is it, I mean, I don't know what it is.
Yes, it would be a civil, um, lawsuit likely brought by the resident of Portola.
Okay. And, uh, so then going back to some of the presentation, the slide that was presented by Adrian had a lineup of the 12-unit caps. And I think she was supposed to be covering the pre-planning commission time. So when the planning commission considered it, that 12 cap, like that red lined out language was in there. And the, that's what the planning commission approved, right? I just want to be very clear.
Yeah.
In the slide, it was struck, but, but she was presenting on what the planning commission saw.
That, that's correct. We were trying to reflect this latest HCD.
I know. It's, it's a lot to reflect. On the opt-in numbers, if we got 10 units out of that, the, the, the refined question is, I know it's not in our grid, but if in a year's time we get 10 out of that, does that open up the ability to say, let's count that toward our 253? Or can we never do that for this cycle? And it's only, oh, good. Thanks. You proved it works. I'm a little unclear on, like, can we get an upside if those units, in fact, materialize in this cycle?
Yeah, I believe you can get an upside to units. Um, you know, if they are deed restricted, rented to lower income housing, then yeah, I think we can get credit.
I just interject and just add one thing. Um, we could also potentially get credit if they are, are developed at, um, moderate or above, above moderate. Because a lot of our ADUs in the, in our table are in the above moderate category. And so if those don't develop as projected, then this would take its place.
Willow comments, were there any material changes? You said there was, I think Adrian was talking about this in the first couple of slides. Not, but there has been no changes in those units since the planning commission agreed or, or approved or recommended for approval, right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. The comment that the current draft is generally workable. I don't think the current draft, from my perspective, is what the planning commission said, saw. You've had subsequent discussions. So that quote, is it reflecting the current draft as you've had discussions after the planning commission meeting? Or do we know?
Yes, I believe that as it is now, after the planning commission meeting and the degree of changes, except for the, the opt-in program are still effective for the housing element.
Okay. So it's, okay. So HCD provided that language in an email form. Is that typical that they draft our plan?
I would say it's not. Um, we were doing our best to get a language that was both acceptable to them and us. And our reviewer said, let me go and talk to our, some of my colleagues. And this is what we got in response to, to that comment. So.
Okay.
We were expecting just a, this looks good, but we got more than this, this looks good.
Yeah, I was surprised by that, uh, both in terms of how hard it is to understand and the fact of that they were drafting, taking the pen themselves. I mean, I understand you've done a great job to try and get everything aligned. It's far in advance of January 31st as possible. So this is just a curiosity to me. One of the differences between SB nine and the opt-in, if I recall correctly, is the question, is that SB nine has to have, uh, owner occupancy of one of the units?
That, that's correct. A, a developer under SB nine would have to file a, um, and I think record a affidavit saying that one of the units would be their principal place of residence for a period of three years, at least three years.
And our opt-in did not require that. I remember that.
It did not, as it is in this program, you know, it's maybe that would have been something that could be included in the, um, in the actual zoning regulations.
Cause I don't have a clue what that blue line which does on that point. Um, do you? I mean, do you think they even thought about that?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Like you, yes.
Yeah. And how I, following up, this is my last question on, on Craig's point about the planning commission discussed four units on an, an SB nine, four units on an the limited number of opt-in programs, but they never discussed seven or eight units, uh, which is now before us. And I know you probably did the math based on 135 eligible parcels, which is the one acre, right? Assuming it's one acre lots, not a half acre.
Yes, it was the one acre lot in the lots that meet the, um, the safety criteria.
So three or four extra units times 135. You don't think that that means that there are additional ingress, egress, safety, et cetera, issues? Like I'm trying to, I'm struggling with that. I, I don't intuitively understand it, but if there's a legal framework that you're saying no, under that legal framework, that's the deal. Um, I'm just trying to understand if that exists.
Well, I, I think is the town attorney mentioned, the planning commission had, um, discussed up to six units, I, I think is what I heard on, for the, the opt-in program. Uh, I think that was one of the presentations I saw, um, based on actually four dwelling units per acre density requirement. So that, um, I, I think it, you know, is, I guess, up to the town council's comfort level if it feels that going to seven or eight is, is appropriate.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'm going to take a third crack. I know, um, Jeff and Judith both asked this question. I'm going to ask another follow-up. I'm still confused on the process of like auditing our progress over the cycle relative to the plan. And so my understanding is, you know, we have the sites inventory in our housing element, no matter what the last one is. And then we have, so that's one thing. And then there's an annual audit that happens. That's a separate thing. What I'm, is it, is it the same agency that is doing both of those?
Yes, it's HCD that is conducting the annual audit and will be reviewing the housing element in the next cycle, determine whether or not the programs the town adopted were complied with or, or made any significant progress.
So, so do we know is, because his, if we have an annual, like, after this is approved and we have an annual audit, let's say we're, or even at the end of the eight-year cycle, let's say, let's say we exceeded our numbers. But not as what was represented in the housing element sites scenario. Does that matter?
At this time, I would say it, it doesn't matter in terms of someone coming to the town and trying to impose penalties. Keep in mind, the housing element is a document that is intended to provide for housing opportunities. HCD isn't actually looking to the city to actually go out and to build the, build these housing units. It's saying, you have to at least give property owners, developers, an opportunity to build the housing units. You build the framework, you know, the housing units will come theoretically. The annual reports, I wouldn't refer to them as an audit. It's just a, it's just more of an accounting of how many housing units in line with the RENA numbers or, or other numbers has the city been able to produce over the years? I think it's more problematic for a town if it doesn't follow through with the, um, the, the completion of the programs that are in the housing element. You know, there's some zoning code changes that need to come about if after three years, you, you haven't done the zoning you said you were going to do, that's going to be problematic potentially. But as long as the city has those opportunities available, as long as it's making progress on doing what it said it was going to do, I think the town would be in, in good, good stand with, uh, HCD and, and town itself.
Okay. And then another, um, my second question has to do with the consequence of how if we don't hit this deadline, then the housing element and the zoning get tethered. And I anticipate that the zoning is going to be complicated and, and we know we have it on the calendar for February, March, but I don't know. Well, we'll see, I guess is what I have to say. Um, and so I guess I see if we get tethered, the longer we go in terms of trying to figure out the zoning, especially if we haven't quite figured out the housing element, we continue, you know, I see there being risk of further and further slide of both. Do you think that's a fair? I mean, we don't have a crystal ball. I'm not, you know, but I'm trying to, to really understand more clearly the consequence of this tethering of those two. And I guess I bring this up because a year ago, we had the same deadline of January 31st. And at that point, we had a consequence that Adrian mentioned tonight, which is how we had to end up with the, um, multifamily. It's the multifamily at, um, the 20 unit per acre density, which is a significant consequence. So I'm just trying to understand what's underneath this need, you know, what what's underneath this need, you know, what are the other things that might be hidden underneath that consequence?
I maybe I should step back a little bit. The the requirement that a town, if it passed, gets past the the January 31st deadline, it doesn't have its housing element certified. And now you have to get your zoning codes adopted with your housing element. That is really, I believe, a reflection of the past practice of cities with housing elements. This is really intended to or really intended to force a city to get its zoning elements or its zoning changes done. There were, you know, probably up until this housing cycle, there were cities that adopted these housing elements and said, we are going to rezone these parcels from single family to I worked in a city like this, from single family to multifamily. And there was, there was no consequence for saying, oh, we've adopted the housing element. No, no, we're not going to follow through on getting it. This, this, the state is now taking this very seriously. And what you see before you, this requirement that they have to be after the 31st link together is forcing cities to do what cities said they were going to do and adopted the programs to get that done. So I don't think there is any underlying, anything underlying that's going to be a worry for the city, so long as the city is making an effort to move forward with getting those houses, the zoning regulations in the public hearing process developed and ultimately adopted by council. If you're making progress on getting that done, that I think that would be reflect well on the town.
This is a process question because if the end of November, you found out there was this parallel review process that we weren't aware of. So you took advantage of that. And the hope was to get in what I'll call fulsome feedback. I don't know what the official terminology is. I would have hoped for a letter because if you get a letter, you think you know the universe, but we thought we knew the universe of issues in July. So my question for you is, we have not gotten any written, other than emails, no formal feedback from HCD. First question, second question. What's to stop them? Is there anything to stop them from imposing additional unexpected requirements? Even if we were to find a way to pass this?
No to both of those questions. So we have not gotten a formal recognition that we are on the right track. No to.
No guarantee.
Yeah, there's no guarantees.
Yes. Okay, thank you. It's I know you've been trying to be creative with the process and it got a little confusing to me.
I had one more question, I thought, to Judith's point about the, you know, the large, if a large number of properties came forward. They scrapped our 12 unit cap. If we set a higher cap at like, say, 50 units, so say that we could provide 20% of our units through this and disperse them through town through this mechanism, do you think they would accept a fairly large cap versus the very small cap we started with?
I I don't think so. I think they they wanted to just eliminate the cap. They wanted this to be a ongoing program for the town. Fair housing issue, yes.
Two more quick questions. How many SB unit, SBU, SB nine applications have we had since we passed the ordinance?
None that I'm aware of. We have one SB nine unit. Okay, one SB nine unit on one lot.
Okay, and then how many ADUs in the last year?
Oh, you was it four accessory dwelling units in the last year that had their permit filed?
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think any other questions? Go to public comment. There anybody, George? Thank you.
Okay, got it. Well, thank you for the opportunity. I rise again in opposition to opt-in upzoning. We are losing a leverage game that we aren't even playing. This is not about the law or technical matters. It's about who decides. Do the people's representatives or outside developers make zoning decisions in this town? This is the ballgame. The single issue is the ballgame for our town. That's why HCD wants it. That's why they're pursuing the process they would, where they are. Let's review where we are. We're in endgame at last, supposedly negotiating the finishing touches when out of nowhere, a new reviewer demands a significant change. Inevitably, this is presented as no big deal. You already have SB nine. Understandably, we are desperate to wrap up the process. The ask, developer controlled zoning must become permanent unrestricted and apply to former owners leaving town, no owner occupancy required. The rationale, no legal arena deficiency cited. Our reviewer has a preference for increased housing mobility. Well, housing mobility is one way to describe the likely exodus of long term residents after developers secure further authority over zoning in the town. In a way, it's flattering to have HCD agree with me over the last couple of years that zoning authority is the key issue for Portola Valley. What do I mean by this? Well, we're in an asymmetric negotiation. One powerful player, one weaker player. In a negotiation like this one, the ultimate objective of the higher leverage player is only revealed at the very end of the process, normally under time pressure. And here we are on cue, the submission deadline days away, with the key objective finally revealed. Transferring additional zoning authority from our elected officials to outside developers. According to HCD, just as housing dictates from Sacramento are presumptively in the public interest, we now learn that zoning decisions by developers are inherently superior to those made by our elected local officials. Unfortunately for us, neither HCD officials or developers have skin in the game. They won't be here when their bad decisions have adverse consequences, such as evacuating town in a wildfire when there are a lot of developments that somebody has upzoned in a certain locality. And here's the key political point. This is really critical. We will have enacted these changes on our own. No politician in Sacramento will have to expend scarce political capital to force us to do this. We're doing it for ourselves and therefore we can only blame ourselves when this goes wrong. And trust me, it will. HCD's last minute gambit, which is extra legal, should be rejected to preserve our town and paradoxically to reach final agreement. In an asymmetric negotiation, the stronger party will demand more and more and more until the weaker party walks. That's the only way these things end. So here's how I recommend pushing back. Scrap the opt-in upzoning program by agreeing with HCD's premise. A limited cap program is inherently unfair, so we're taking it out. We put it in, it wasn't required, we can delete it and we should and we must. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Anybody else in the schoolhouse? Karen Askey.
I would have to say I agree with George, you know, on the high level on this. But I have some detailed questions and forgive me if I'm not quite getting this right. But my understanding is, is with if we, even if we were to move forward with the opt-in in some way, we're not rezoning any of those properties for opt-in. So we could still do the zoning for the rest of the housing element. And does that get us anything? Another question is, is, okay, we've had one SB nine unit. Can we extrapolate that to eight in our housing element? Because we have some previous history. The supportive housing at 4394 Alpine Road, my understanding is, is there's going to be a number of units built. I don't know, say it's 10, but yet we're only going to get accountability for one unit because they don't have a shared question, a kitchen. And my question is, is how do we get credit for 10 individual units for 10 individual people? There has to be a way to do that. And is there something we could do? Oh, wishful thinking on my part. Have we made it clear to HCD, and this ties to Craig's comment, that our opt-in program was for primary residences, which is better for people, all this middle market that wants that housing, which they always talk about the missing middle. So make it clear it's primary. It's not this ADU and JADU stuff. And again, one of the questions, and I, I know there was a lot of talk in the ad hoc ad hoc housing element committee about the number of units. I don't remember what went to the planning commission, but I, I thought we basically had settled at four. But I guess the question is, if we went to five for primary units, would something like that work? These are all ideas, they're last minute. I realize we're under the gun, but I wanted to share my thinking. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Any more in the schoolhouse? On Zoom, we have David Cardinal.
Hi, great, thanks. I'm not sure how much of this is going to be super helpful in the next 30 minutes, but it seems like originally we spent two years in the ad hoc housing committee and the planning commission coming up with really good ways to put affordable housing where it made sense along our quarters. And now we've sort of been told, or we have been told that we need to put affordable housing where it's frankly tricky. There's limited sewer, there's limited everything. Given that, I'm wondering whether there's a better way, because we've been allergic to multifamily units like triplexes and quadplexes. But to be honest, for the, to replace a six or 8,000 square foot home with three 2,000 square feet, a triplex with a single driveway, shared garage, shared utilities, I think is way, way more environmentally and frankly, scenically attractive than taking these lots and chopping them up into tiny places with tons of little houses. So that's just someone who's lived here forever and thinks about what I'd like to see for my neighborhood. And if it's something we get a chance to do more with over time, I'd love to see us go that way, even though in the past, it's not something we've wanted. Thanks.
Thank you, David. John Golden.
Unmute, there we go. Yes, so I wanted to comment on the opt-in also. And as I was reading through this, it reminded me of the discussion we had with ADUs. So as you recall, you know, we got a mandate from the state about ADUs. And one of the things we looked at was said, okay, we have to do ADUs. But what would be good for Portola Valley? And we actually did some things that were beyond the minimums, just because that would be something that made more sense for Portola Valley. So I was looking at this opt-in in kind of the same way in that our last discussion, as I recall, on the planning commission, you know, we started comparing opt-in to the SB nine. And of course, SB nine, as everybody knows, and the ADUs, we have to do those. Those apply everywhere, there's no discretion. But we thought opt-in, at least I thought opt-in was better in that we did give some additional concessions to the property owners. But in return for that, we got some control back. So I thought that getting the control back was worth the trade off there. And that's been a big theme that people want to maintain is our local control. So if it was just, and I thought about that again, and I thought, oh, we did limit the number. But you know, if SB nine had taken off or did take off in ADUs, we probably would want to have applied and expanded opt-in on our own in order to get to try to maintain that local control. So if I were just looking at this from the removing the caps perspective, I think it would actually be just fine. The big issue for me comes in, as folks have been homing in on, is these extra things that seem to have been added in. And I'm wondering if there's some way we can limit that there. As I do recall, by the way, in terms of the four, I think when originally came to the PC, it was spectus four per acre. And we ended up dropping that back to just four total in order to be conservative on the numbers. So that's kind of my recollection on that and my observation as to what's going on with opt-in and where the crux of the matter is. Thank you.
Ron Eastman. Think you need to.
Sorry, I had to, so I apologize. I had to punch through a few screens. I wanted to say two things. I want first, I also 150% agree with George's comments. I'll say no more on that. But the other thing that I want, the other topic I want to bring up is I'm sorry, I haven't written to you about this because I thought we had more time. It's the the issue of the 4390 Alpine Road and the country offices. And you know, one ember lands on the, that, that, that building has, is a, it's a 10,000 square foot building with a shake shingle roof. The thing is a giant bonfire waiting to be set alight. And if that building, one ember could land on the roof of that building and set the entire, burn down the entire Navarre Triangle. So what needs to be done before 4390 is upzoned is you need to pass an ordinance that says if you add a structure on existing parcel with, which has existing structures, those other structures need to be brought up to chapter 7A standards. That's, that's not a radical thing. Chapter 7A was passed in 1997. And you know, even the older houses in in Portola Valley, you know, at least have new chapter 7A compliant roofs. If they don't, you know, the roof is leaking. So most people have replaced the roofs. I thought we, I didn't write to you about this because I thought we had more time. But then I learned that HCD is demanding that the zoning changes be done before they'll accept the housing. So I think, I think this, a rule like that needs to be put into effect ASAP. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Karen Bhatra.
Hi, I'm struggling a bit on making comments. As you know, I like to generally write them. And in this case, there's so much new information tonight. It's hard to make really succinct comments here. Even though our town attorney can claim that perhaps legally you can make a decision tonight, I would really struggle if I were any of you. And I can kind of see in your faces that this is a very difficult discussion here. I feel not only the opening of opt-in to 135 properties is a very big change that the town hasn't really absorbed, but also this kind of, I think the word Frankenstein was used to describe the mix of opt-in and SB nine. I don't, I think we just saw that tonight and that's really hard to respond to in a three minute comment meeting. And in my research, I did look at the other towns and I don't mean, I don't remember seeing anything that was combining some duplexes with SB nine at the level of seven to eight. So that's another comment. And the, oh, my final comment is, I'm, perhaps part of the problem here is we're not dealing with formal HCD letters. And even if this behind the scenes thing was expeditious, it probably got into more trouble. And maybe we need to have a formal HCD review when we do go to the next step. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Judith Mendelson.
Hi, thank you for taking my call. I boy, this is a tough one. And I really think housing is a great idea. But I think that the proposed language for the modified combined SB nine opt-in program is extremely confusing and poorly written. I think it hasn't been vetted. I think it hasn't been vetted, and I would be extremely reluctant to submit something that would then open us up to months and months and months of trying to figure out what it actually means. I think the comment about sewer, um, is really important and might be sort of a way out. I don't know how many of the lots that are currently under consideration for this program have sewer, but you can't put seven or eight units on a lot with the existing septic system. So if the vast majority of the hundred and thirty-five lots are not on sewer, it basically rules them out anyway. Um, so perhaps my suggestion would be, as someone else said, just take the whole opt-in program out for now. Submit before the deadline, so we have submitted something yet again that has been vetted by the planning commission, that has been approved and always except for this additional thing that was added on. And then if they turn it down, which I would hate to see, then we discuss again, but once we're past this deadline, um, all of the, all of the, um, consequences come into play regardless. And so then it kind of doesn't matter how fast or slow, but I'm, I'd certainly love to see us submit a plan and say to the state, look, we've got all the units that you said we should have. Please let us start building them. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith. Uh, Rita Comas.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. Um, first, I'd like to start off in saying that we do have a few members of our council that are recused on different parts, and I hope that is handled. I, I heard, um, vice mayor mentioned about her recusal part, um, but I, I haven't heard any others. And I, I want to thank George, uh, for his comments. And also, um, Karen Askey, I really agree with what Karen said about these, uh, this document seems to be, um, all over the place and, uh, and, and not, um, it, it's more like this one said, you know, junior high school. And I, I think, I think we, we owe ourselves so much more than that. You know, we're, we're at the, you know, the final inning and double overtime. You know, let's present something that we feel proud of. And yes, we can talk about all the hours that have been committed and all the dollars that have been committed. But what are we sending to them? You know, the document on, that went on, uh, December first. You know, um, perhaps we can have, uh, you know, a group, uh, do a read-through or something before it is then submitted. And just want to mention something about these a hundred and thirty-five lots. We don't have the infrastructure in our town to support those lots. We don't have the infrastructure in our town to support the current, what was it, uh, one thousand eight hundred and something lots? We don't have the infrastructure to support what's already here. So, you know, and, and I don't see much in the housing element, and this is the housing element that's currently on the, um, portolavalley.net. I think that's what we're working off of, um, about the wooey. Our town is a wooey, and it's, I'm glad to see more mention of some of these maps and the potential danger. But I, I had to go to page, I think it was eighty-four or a hundred and two to, to see that. And I don't know if that's presented in our, you know, letter that we're sending to them. You know, like in the, in the first three paragraphs about our, we don't have the infrastructure. We don't have the finances to build the infrastructure and, and we, um, we're, we live in a wooey and we know that. So, thank you. Please read this. Let's, let's not just throw it away at the last minutes. Let's do what's right for all of residents of our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Uh, Dale Fow.
Great, thank you. I, I think I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. Uh, first of all, I want to support what, uh, George Savage said. I support, uh, his comments entirely. Uh, and a few other points. Uh, number one, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars so far. Um, I don't know about you, but I think that's a huge number for a town our size. And here we are with, without a housing element. Uh, number two point, having HCD write our housing element is, is just beyond the pale. I find that just extremely obnoxious. Number three, this is nothing more than a cram down at the last minute to force some views on us that were never vetted by us. And what's so fascinating is that anything in here isn't even included in our numbers, uh, for HCD. Number four, if, if we take the hundred and thirty-five lots, which I have to presume that the interim director is correct, multiply by four, you know, that could mean just by sleight of pen here, six, more than six hundred more structures in Portola Valley, uh, which is a huge impact upon the land and a huge impact upon our, our fire danger. And we've talked about that at length. And my last point is that in spite of what, what the attorney says, this opt-in has always been very small. It was originally placed in, if I remember all the discussions, because there was some, somebody wanted to put some upzoning in around properties to meet the H, the HCD requirements. And finally, it was said, okay, well, let's just put in a few opt-ins as a pilot program to get a few units, which I think was twelve, uh, for our RENA numbers and use it as a pilot program. But to suddenly change this with no limit and no pilot is, has not been discussed at any length, uh, by the planning commission, by the community, by anything. And unfortunately, I think you, you cannot, or at least I couldn't in good conscience, uh, vote for something like that. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Dale. Uh, Kristy Corley.
Yes, thank you. Um, we love our wildland urban life and our urban interface community. We moved here because we love it with our wildlife, our open creeks, sometimes overflowing, our dark light ordinance to, um, appeal to the wildlife in our area. Um, so I just wanted to start with that. I'd like to see our planner write our housing element, not HCD. I was shocked to hear that as well. Um, with the residents', uh, desires in mind. I'm opposed to the opt-in, and I think SB nine units should produce maybe for a year, which would be twenty-eight. Just a thought. Uh, I've always commented that we should have SB nine units in, because it's already law. It's already vetted law in many other cities. And opt-in, we're creating, uh, our own law in a way, housing law. There's already a hundred and fifty housing laws in California. Why would we want to be the guinea pig on this one? Um, let's see. I'd like to hear a response to Karen Askey's earlier question. Uh, I'd like to see mailings go out to our mail, town mailboxes as not all is on PV forum. We cannot assume that every elderly and people are on PV forum. And if we do mailings to mailboxes, we can also then up, update our entire community, not missing a single one on the housing element, the safety element evacuation. I remember being in, um, during COVID, hearing evacuation was going, plan was going to come out by, um, October. And I haven't seen it yet, so this really concerns me. Uh, we're looking at doubling the size of our community. Uh, and we need a plan if, uh, a disaster does strike. So I agree with George Savage to, uh, not go with the opt-in. And I'd like to see, uh, the combo SB nine and opt-in program, have better education with our residents and possibly be relooked at. And I can't see a timer. How much time do I have left?
Ten seconds.
Okay, um, I think that's all my comments. I will add that I think Dorothy Ford Park Open Space was our first donated land to Portola Valley from, uh,
Kristy, I'm gonna have to cut you off.
And I'd like to have our, um, Little League field not touched at all as the whole San Mateo County uses our Little League field, which is part of Dorothy.
Kristy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Bob Adams.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, we clearly have to get an approved, uh, plan at some point, uh, and I think we'd be wise to submit a plan. Uh, and in, in this council meeting to be, be able to prove it. Uh, I, along with many others that have commented, think that we should not include the opt-in element and just remove it entirely. Let's, let them then put it down in letter that they want to have us have an opt-in, and then we can make a case that they're asking us to do something that's outside the law. And I think without some sort of, of significant statement by them, with their being arbitrary, we can go back and forth by eliminating it. If they want to bring it up, they can, and we can use that against them. So I, uh, would advise you to go ahead and submit the plan without the opt-in element. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Um, somebody at the phone number that ends in seven, five, six, two.
Good evening. This is Caroline Britton. Good night. Thank my fellow residents for, um, speaking up tonight and especially what George said, because it sums it all. And then for all the people who commented, um, the people, the staff who submitted the original letter to, uh, HCD was flawed. And we have spent hours and many, um, immunity, uh, years of community service to, and, and, and set our comments to the town, and they refused to, um, correct the, um, the document. And now we're stuck with it, but it, it's, it's really, it's a shame. And it, it's not, um, it's not acceptable. Um, we had staff who ignored the RENA five guidelines, which are in our general plan. And yes, it's not just about sewer. We don't have the water. We don't have the essentials. I believe that, um, that was mentioned in the, in the, um, in the article, in the almanac that, uh, now we're going forward to the essentials. I'm sorry, we don't have the essentials, and we have brought that up to the town council on many occasions. We don't have water. We don't have reliable commu-, uh, communication. We don't have reliable energy. Nothing. And infrastructure and public safety. It's all a big mess. And to go ahead with this, this is, yeah. Like George says, we're very weak, and it's, it's a shame that the town council has acted like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Nan Shostak. That hand went away. All right, at this moment, up, now I see you back, Nan.
I'm muted. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Nan.
Sorry about that. Okay, um, yes, I just wanted to say that I'm completely in agreement with George and other speakers that we should uh, submit the plan, whether tonight or, you know, whether this week or later, without the opt-in program. The opt-in was originally designed to give us some flexibility to, to investigate whether uh, the increased density it would produce, uh, in a few, what, twelve, twelve lots scattered through the town would, um, would work for us. And what we've done is create a self-inflicted injury because HCD has turned it around on us and is using it as a, as basically a sword at our, at our throats to threaten us at the last minute. If we don't do this, then we suffer the consequences. I'm worried about safety on the geologic safety committee. I'm very, very much worried about evacuation. And density of seven or eight units per, you know, where you have a single unit now, it's just not going to work for us. We cannot get everyone out. And we cannot evacuate everyone if we have such high densities scattered through town. I just, I just cannot see it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Nan. Um, Leslie Kreese.
Hi, thank you for taking my call and thank you for the, your hard work on this project. Um, I have to say I agree with George Savage. We're in a negotiation sort of doom loop. Um, and someone has to change the rules of the game, or we will lose more in this loop. And by with removing the opt-in housing, we've reset the table a bit. So I would encourage the town council to remove the opt-in housing and to give the most briefest of explanations. I would not go into, you know, it was a trial program and we were trying for X number of units and whatever, whatever, because that just gives more for them to argue with. Um, so I think the less said is better. I would remove the opt-in program. And, and George is spot on, and I agree with Nan's issues. I mean, the evacuation in town is a real concern. Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Rebecca.
Hi, um, I've been listening to everyone's comments, and, um, I think the principal goal of tonight really is to submit a housing element. I think it's very critical that we do that because the ramifications of not submitting a housing element by the end, and getting, and getting it approved by the end of this month are pretty dramatic. Uh, we really open ourselves up even more to, uh, more restrictions, uh, builders' ele-, builders' remedy projects and whatnot, where we would have absolutely no control over what gets built in town. Um, the changes to the opt-in elements, um, give me pause. My personal view is that we should pretty much go back to the original, uh, plan, which was the four primary units, uh, remove the cap and add in the requirement. And I don't know if it needs to be within the housing element, or if it's just what we consider future, in the future zoning things, but to require sewer. Um, I think a lot of the concerns that people have expressed of six hundred potential housing units of, um, of problems with evacuation from all these additional housing units, it's just not going to come to pass because the majority of the town is not on sewer. So most of the internal parts of town where the one acre properties are located do not have access to sewer. So it would be if pretty impractical and unrealistic for any of those properties to consider upzoning, even though they're in that list of a hundred and thirty-five. Uh, because it's just obscenely expensive to build a sewer, and I built a sewer twenty years ago, and it was expensive, and it's gotten even worse. So it's just not, no one's gonna, no developers gonna go and invest in a bunch of, of four or six homes on a property if they have to spend a million. If they have to spend a million dollars extending a sewer line. So I think we're just kind of getting a little over excited about the potential when they're just not gonna real, they're not gonna be realized. But I think going back to HCD without including that opt-in thing is just gonna be guaranteed to have that thing refused. And we're gonna be back where we were with all the bad ramifications. So I would just recommend that we leave it in. We remove the cap as they requested. We add the sewer requirement if we have to actually put that in the in the HE or we just leave that aside for the zoning changes. And, you know, you can consider possibly increasing it to four primary plus two accessory if we just want to be a little bit more flexible with them. But again, out of those 135, if I think if you went back through there and looked at those limits, those properties, and you took out all the ones that would that are not within 500 feet of a sewer line, that number is gonna drop pretty dramatically. And it will be pretty much those that are along the main arteries of town, Alpine and Portola.
Rebecca, I need to cut you off. You're at your three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any other hands raised on Zoom or in the schoolhouse. Wait a second here. So I think we have one more in the schoolhouse. Yeah, we can't have a dialogue, but do you have a comment you'd like to make? That's okay.
Been here 34 years. We moved here with our dogs or horses and our kids. Is there a map of these 35 properties or a list of them? 135?
Well, we're gonna have discussion and we'll bring, we'll raise that at that point.
Because I don't know if my property is one of them and I'm on a really old subject thing. So, you know, I'd like her second point where she talked about how many of these 135 properties are on septic or on sewer.
Thank you. Thank you. One more on Zoom. Greg.
Yeah. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So it's very difficult to disagree with any of the public comment from the earlier speakers tonight, but I had one recommendation or suggestion for you to consider when you submit the housing element. And really, it is all about eliminating ambiguity associated with our submission. So, you know, having listened to Craig and some of the other comments about confusion, et cetera, I think we would be very well served. And perhaps our town attorney could assist with this is as part of the submission, just, you know, deploy generous use of definitions and and even examples in in footnotes. I think that would eliminate any ambiguity in our part and and quite possibly protect us from a very expensive consequences of having to deal with ambiguity with hiring consultants and defend litigation and legal fees and expert witnesses, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, so my message here really is we should do everything with the presentation of the housing element, however it's submitted, to drive out, maximize driving out ambiguity.
Thank you, Greg. Betsy Morgan Taylor.
Thank you for recognizing me, Chair and Council. Just a quick point of information. Both iPhone call-in was really tough for me and iPad, I could not make the raise hand function work. I perhaps that's part of the software problem, but I'm, I'm here now on my desktop. Three quick points that I wanted to toss out there. And one is just the expedited nature of last minute decision making. People, people make many more mistakes under duress. And we're already having to fly over our planning commission, which I think personally unfortunate. So, so I would really urge a, sorry, I'm trying to turn off my iPad. I would really urge us to take this slowly so we cover all of the bases. This is too big a change to make a decision at the last minute. Secondly, I wanted to say that over two counties, Santa Clara County and our own San Mateo County, we have 35 municipalities. And only 10 of those are currently in compliance. The rest of us, so the vast majority like us have not yet passed. So we're in plenty, plenty good company. And lastly, how I would like to respond or where I would like to direct your attention is I did a little quick research this afternoon and was able to find a couple of recently passed, as in November, December passes. When I believe my senses of HCD has become more strict in general. So I thought that that was worth including both Los Altos Hills and Morgan Hill. Morgan, yeah, Morgan Hill, both those very thoughtfully addressed housing mobility with an expansion on the SB nine program. We are in a lot of hot water trying to combine the two. So I really urge us to opt out of opt-in and use SB nine thoughtfully, as those two communities did, to make it more robust and suitable both to HCD and to our community. Thanks for waiting for me to get those remarks and I look forward to your discussion. Very good luck. I know this puts you in a tough spot. Thanks for being there.
Thank you, Betsy. Jim White.
Sorry about that. Found the button. I think we're not that far off from where we were a year ago. I think if you keep opt-in with a cap and add Glen Oaks back or do some trade. I, what I worry about right now is the fact that we're trying to get to some perfect scenario that will not pass HCD's analysis with changing reviewers. If we have five days to get an approval. And if we don't, I guess I'm trying to understand the implications to what it's gonna cost to staff time, consultant time, to have approved zoning changes that HCD will approve programmatic things down the road once we're under that consequence. And as someone who has a project in production right now or in construction and has seen the degradation in service times with the town where our projects being impacted dramatically cost-wise and time-wise. I think that the the cost to staff and budget has real implications. So I'd love to see us put a proposal that HCD can say yes to and not end up in a situation that is gonna be prolonged in how we actually get to a compliant plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. All right, I don't see any additional hands raised at this point. No additional hands in the schoolhouse. So I'm going to close public comment and suggest that we take a what do you think, guys? Five minutes or 10 minutes? Seven minutes? Five minute break? Okay, why don't, why don't we get back at, I'll give a little extra time to make it even at 9:25. All right, it's 9:25. I'll call the meeting back in session. We're now on council discussion and I just wanted to put something out there as a suggestion in terms of process. We have draft four, which was the draft that was approved by the planning commission with their amendments. Then we have draft 4A, which is the incremental items around opt-in and opt-in Frankenstein. I like that. And so I'm gonna suggest so that we don't get the two muddled that we take. Well, I want to hear your thoughts, but my suggestion is that we address the changes from the planning commission and draft four first. And see if we can get consensus around that and then move on to the additional items from 4A. What do you guys think of that about, about that approach? Any? Everything that, everything that was approved by the planning commission. So that's, so what was incremental was the opt-in. Yes, opt-in version one and the Frankenstein version, the non-cap. John, do you wanna, would it be helpful, because we do have aspects of the draft that were reviewed and amended by the planning commission before we got this incremental information from HCD in the last 10 days.
That's correct. And again, I'm sorry, your question is.
Could you give better clarity than I just did in terms of the differences? I mean, the draft four, which was what the planning commission reviewed and amended and then approved with their amendments.
Right.
Right. So that's, to me, that's kind of step one. And then there's all of the additional stuff, which is the opt-in discussions that we, we need to address all of the above, right?
That's correct.
So I was wondering if the council would want to focus on the initial planning commission amendments first before we got into the opt-in. If you guys want to do it all together, that's fine. I just. Okay. All right. Well, then it doesn't seem like a popular suggestion looking around the room here. So that's fine. So I guess I'll open it up for discussion, but let's make sure that we address the draft four as well. Just because we haven't had as much comment and question about that. Who would like to go first?
I'll start.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, yes, this is an asymmetric negotiation, but you know, this is also HCD is regulating 300 counterparties across the state in county, city and towns. And all of those negotiations are public. So every decision they make is subject to criticism, not only by every other jurisdiction, but also by the legislature. Their, their HCD is following a raft of laws. I think it's over two dozen at this point. So they actually don't have as much, I mean, they don't have a lot of leeway in terms of what they can and can't accept. So I have to assume that if they've come to us and said this opt-in is a deal breaker for them, you know, I'm sort of I don't, I don't, I think it's, I have to assume that they mean that. So, you know, my one thought about the negotiations aspect of this, they really do have full power here. You know, the opt-in, we came up with it as an option because we got a lot of requests years ago to disperse development throughout town and minimize the burden on specific neighborhoods. The opt-in was was an idea for how to get more small complexes built throughout town as opposed to a few, a handful of large complexes. And it was sort of being developed in parallel to the SB nine. And I think it, I think it, well, it gives us more control over something than an SB nine split. I think the state has taken it and trying to push something. You know, basically what they're trying to do is get seven or eight units on a lot as opposed to four, because that might up the incentive that somebody splits a lot instead of because our, because our single home, single family home prices are so high. I'll come back to that. I, one question that I just was reviewing with, with, with John was if you are, your property fronts a built sewer, sewer tie-in is required. And so if a property is on a sewer line, it is required. I did look at West Bay's map. There are quite a few of what I assume are the eligible properties that don't have sewer lines running through them. So a large swath, particularly I noticed West Ridge, would have quite a few properties that don't have a sewer line fronting their property, which I think is, is, is how it was defined legally. So there would be quite a few that would be excluded from this. Something like that. Yeah, yeah. It's, it's still, I mean, it's still quite a few. You know, that said, you have to imagine would, could you picture half of West Ridge turning into, you know, four, you know, four units a lot? I think, I think, I think there would be, I think there would be a few, I don't think it would be that many. If, if this sort of subdividing and splitting properties up became desirable, we'd have two options. We'd have SB nine or our own regulated process. I think we can do a better job than what you get through SB nine. That's my opinion. I would like to submit, approve something tonight. Ideally, I would like to approve something that that has a chance of being approved. There may be some room to negotiate on these seven or eight units per lot. We could push down to something like five or six units per lot. That's my initial thoughts. I was more or less, I mean, I'm happy to go through the, the, I thought draft four was, I was fine with most of what planning recommended as changes. I didn't see anything that really threw me off there. So I was, that part I was comfortable with. This, this opt-in thing, I do want to hear more about it. My colleagues' opinions, but like I said, I, I would feel much better submitting something by the end of the month. And I think to have any hope of getting certified, we have to have something in it for the opt-in program. Maybe we think about what that something is.
Go for it.
So I'll follow up. So I think we have two paths. I think we could remove the opt-in. We could engage our state representatives and we could try to hold HCD accountable. I think the huge opportunity cost of that, and I think we're gonna be at this for another six months if we take that path. So although I think that's possible, I think it's potentially a hard road for us. I think another option might be to modify their proposal. And one thing I'd ask my fellow council members to think about is what if we said no SB nine opt-in blend? Like we just left that off the table. We said SB nine stays at four units. So that's two primaries plus whatever, however you match up your ADUs. The thing I'd remind people is SB nine has no lot limit size. It has some safety, but it doesn't have any lot limit sizes. On the opt-in that we keep that partly to deal with this fair housing and partly, I think when we initially constructed it, it was for a good thing. It was something that gave us some control and it's our program. So, you know, we get to define the parameters around that program. And so what I would say for the opt-in is I would be comfortable, I know planning commission has discussed this, is maybe even going to six primary units, but no ADUs. It would also have a non-owner clause so that a developer actually could come in and build the cluster. And it would be limited to one acre. So I think that something like that would give HCD what they're looking for is the fair housing component because it's potentially spreads it around. But it gives us control on the quality of the build. And part of a PDU is you can say, you know, this stuff has to be clustered together, can't all be out on the periphery of a lot, et cetera. So I see the opt-in differently than other people where I think it's something where we have control and we can define a program that gives us the kind of housing that we want. Because I think we've all said that housing is important. I mean, most of the people I talk to don't disagree with the high level premise of housing. It's the details of, you know, who gets to come in and what kind of housing is gonna get built. So I would suggest that something along those lines might be a way to get us something that we could approve tonight. It would be within the sort of confines of what the planning commission is already discussed. So I would ask the other council members to consider that. Thank you. Sure. Yeah, right. Yeah, yeah. So we get rid of this common, the Frankenstein. Okay, so no Frankenstein. We limit SB nine to what it is in state law. So it's four units. The primaries, the secondaries, et cetera, right? And I was just reminding people that SB nine doesn't have a lot license. So because originally I was thinking maybe we up the SB nine, but the problem is then it's like all the lots we have in town. So I like the idea of being able to put a limit. And then we keep the opt-in program that we expand and go from four to six, they're primary units. So that, you know, you can build within the program, six primary units, but no additional ADUs. So you don't get to say, well, it's four plus two plus five, you know, and that's, that's where we start getting these pretty large numbers. So I would leave the non-owner that gives a developer an opportunity to build the cluster. I think if we're serious about this, I sort of think we need to do that. And then we define a program, you know, much like a planned development unit, a PDU, that allows people to build clusters or put in some duplexes. But that they gotta be away from the edge of the property. They can't be like, oh, I'm gonna take advantage of a five-foot setback. I mean, I think those are the things, at least for me, when I think about this within our community, part of what makes it beautiful is I mean, I think those are the things, at least for me, when I think about this within our community, part of what makes it beautiful is the space between the houses. And I think that an opt in program that we define, we could continue to maintain. That help Mary? Great, thank you. If I say it three times, it would even better.
Thank you. Right. I have a point to make on that. And then I had to spend time writing down my own thoughts because these issues are so complicated. I needed to do that. So I'm going to bury your, ask Rita to be patient while I do that. Craig, on your point, you know, separating it out. I suspect HCD asked a very logical question when it came up with Frankenstein, which is if you say nothing, how do the two programs relate? We cannot override SB nine. So I understand why they might have gone down the route of, and how does it work? I don't agree with their solution whatsoever, but I think, you know, coming up with six and, you know, developer only, to me, you're starting to craft something that we still wouldn't have the answer to. How do the two relate to each other? And I think that alone takes a little time in processing.
So can I give you an answer? I I think you just say if it's, if you do an SB nine split, you can't do opt in. You just say that they're not, cannot be combined.
But again, HCD would say then you're not allowing upward mobility potentially, we don't know. So let me, let me read my thing because I I had to set it out. The staff in HCD identified an opportunity to expedite HCD's review of our updated housing element in December by submitting an updated draft for parallel review with our planning commission, hoping that HCD would be able to provide fulsome feedback so we could update our housing element if needed and meet our January 31st deadline. That hope has not been realized and we are now required to decide based on incomplete feedback from HCD whether to accept the current housing element draft for A, which includes HCD's late breaking requirement of what I'll call an uncapped permanent opt in program rather than our original exploratory, as I will refer to it, opt in program. This state agency administrative process has created distrust and confusion in a community that has applied enormous resources to respond in good faith to expansive, stringent and ambiguous government mandates. This prolonged and expensive process is in fact undermining our community's ability to refocus our resources toward the creation of affordable housing. Local planning matters. This housing element as proposed significantly erodes our Portola Valley historical zoning and land use methods. Portola Valley's plan, planning approach has been held up by planning agencies worldwide as innovative, protective against many natural risks and respectful of our natural environment. We should not adopt a change that with a few short strokes of a pen eviscerates much of the core of our town's planning policies. Housing mobility does not require this overreaching plan. If raised timely, we could have drafted a more fitting response. Obviously, that did not happen. The opt in program would be additive to the already applicable state imposed SB nine. I'm not sure that people will or will not find it more attractive than SB nine and therefore don't see a clear benefit in an uncapped opt in program. We should not affirmatively adopt a broad reaching change, particularly as we not had any time to analyze incremental and potential safety issues with this proposed uncapped structure. I don't think the planning commission had in mind an uncapped program. And I can be asked if I want to approve, you know, a a structure in one place in town, be fully on board with it and not know that you're actually asking me if I want to put it in the middle of Dora people's field. So I I I worry about that. Note very importantly that since we have not received formal comments from HCD on our prior submission, we don't know what else we may require, even if we update our housing element to include this permanent opt in. Even if we find a way to accept this requirement, we are not assured that HCD will provide its approval or move the goalpost again. The exploratory opt in program was somewhat controversial and the community went earlier discussed and operates at odds with many of our town's planning principles. I personally became comfortable with the formulation as an exploratory program because it represented our community's good faith attempt to be creative and achieving arena numbers and addressing our housing needs. As an uncapped permanent program, it will fundamentally and irrevocably alter our town. I acknowledge our collective feeling of exhaustion. We want to do the right thing. We want to affect more affordable housing in town and comply with state law. We will find ways to make housing more accessible and affordable. I am generally comfortable with version four. It is not perfect, but it is the product of a vibrant community process. But I'm not comfortable approving for A as long as it includes an opt in program. So that's, thank you for your patience.
Mary?
I can't make the mayor go next. Uh, well, I I really wanted to start out by thanking John for working so hard and just coming in. And of course, thank you very much for just coming in and trying to make the, get this over the the finish line. I I can imagine how hard this is to take, to take in. And I find that the whole situation sort of unacceptable and undemocratic. That, I mean, our process has been very democratic. But the feeling, the futile feeling of the overlord speaking to us and having tried to meet it and then being moved around here and there, it feels very, very undemocratic, very, very top, top down and very unpleasant. So it's hard not to get sort of angry. I think our mistake was trying to be creative and cooperative. We didn't sort of think of ourselves as going into a negotiation in in what has turned out to be a very unequal power battle. So I agree, I'd have to say, I I totally agree with George. I can't, I I can't see that this was a good strategy. That our our negotiation technique, I think it it got us into a lot of trouble. It's, it's been hugely costly, costed, costful to us as a community and looks to be and not to mention painful, but it looks considerably like we're about to lose the baby in the birth process. So that, that's sort of the way I feel about it. I feel like the village is really on the line now. This is, this is really the real thing. We were, we spent a lot of, lot of energy thinking about this, a lot of good faith, a lot of belief in in providing housing. A lot of missed opportunities for housing, I believe, and 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 a lot of blaming and shaming going on. But the current situation with this unlimited opt in just seems like we gave up. So that would be, my, my take home is, is this is a very difficult, difficult plan to get delivered. I I completely agree. And we just have to save the baby and the baby is the village. And how we do that is probably by moving the goalpost a bit ourselves. And I I would be for, I could almost stomach what came to us from the planning commission. And I could almost stomach it with our opt in that was that was very, very modified, but I I don't feel comfortable at this point with going forward with the full the full opt in. So I agree with both of your plans.
Mary, just for, so you're okay with the recommendations from the planning commission, so for four, so, okay. And so for opt in, I was unclear what you meant there.
I would probably let it stand. My theory would be to pull the whole opt in off and let them, and see if we can make it attractive enough and make them realize that we really do believe in our community. We really want to preserve some, some parts of our community. That would be my choice.
So no opt in?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I also am comfortable with draft four with the amendments from the planning commission. And I don't have any further comments about that. I just wanted to echo what's been said before about dispersment. I'm on year three of working on this. And it, we originally were, you know, the first two years, two and a half years, it was called dispersment. Now I guess it's called mobility. But the concept of dispersment is not new. It's been talked about in the housing element process since the get go. As a lot of people will recall, you know, the big pivot that happened when there was too much concentration in the Nat Horse neighborhood. The outcome of that was a strong emphasis on wanting to have dispersment throughout the community. And then also the survey that we did back then indicated a desire for dispersment about the community. So I think dispersment or mobility, whatever we call it, is something that the community has wanted. And now it looks like, you know, HCD, you know, I obviously don't agree with their methods here, but are really leaning into that more. So I don't think it's going away. And my, you know, my concern about taking opt in off the table altogether is we're really going very far backward. And I don't think, you know, then my question becomes, well, then what is our plan for dispersment? And how are we going to identify that plan? And having sat through, you know, 140 hours of public meetings on it, I I don't think I've heard better alternatives to that. So I too would like to be able to approve something tonight. I think it's, you know, for both the real costs, as we heard, $750,000 and counting, as well as the opportunity cost, the backlog of all the work. And we're not getting to being able to recruit new people to our staff. Just kind of this dark cloud that continues to hang over our community. And the fact that we are now in, you know, the the second year of our eight year arena, arena cycle and we're not able, we're not getting to that work. And honestly, that's what concerns me tremendously for future councils and the community. You know, as the clock is ticking, we, we're a small town that can't really walk and chew gum sometimes because we don't have the staff to be able to do it. And we need to get to work on the thing, regardless of what's in the paperwork. I feel like we need to get to the work that we we've planned, that we we know that we're committed to. So in terms of opt in, you know, I I I like the fact that it's one acre. I like the local control. I'm comfortable with the non owner and I am comfortable with the non cap, no cap, simply because it's analogous to SB nine. I'm definitely not comfortable with the Frankenstein. I think for all of us, it's been hard to even understand what it is in its very last minute. So not to mention all the comments that have been made, it was written by HCD, not our community. So my conundrum is if we put forward a plan with just the original opt in with no cap, will that be enough for HCD? And I suspect, I'm concerned that it won't be because it, that's four units and SB nine is already four units and they're obviously looking for a little bit more. And so a discussion that I would like to have is if we were to do a little bit more than the baseline, the original opt in, what might that look like? And it seemed to me, Craig, like you were tossing out some ideas there. So I was wondering if anybody else would want to brainstorm that a little bit.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's, I mean, I was saying five or six, you know, I mean, I think what, I think what HCD is looking for here is is something that allows more units per per lot in that situation, basically as a further incentive for someone to, you know, or go a single family home for multi family. So they're saying seven or eight. We could come back with five or six. I was gonna ask, you know, Craig, in your mind, the difference between six primaries and say four primaries with two ADUs? Cause the ADUs then would would probably fall into a lower, like a lower affordability category. And you'd have probably four mod, above moderate main houses and two maybe moderate or even low income units on each lot. I mean, uh, uh, six units, but with four plus two instead of six, I just, I'm just thinking of that as an alternative.
Right. So I, I just said six because if you're sort of trying to cluster to provide seniors someplace to live, it's six primary. I mean, if we wanted to do sort of like SB nine does where it's, it could be six primaries, but it could be four primaries and two ADUs. I mean, I wouldn't have any problem with this saying you can mix it up. I would want to put a a cap on
Okay, so six units in some combination of
That would be fine.
Or even any size.
Yeah, but but the emphasis, I think, to HCD is that it could be six primary. Cause I see that as a plus. I mean, that would be potentially three duplexes. That, yeah, and they consider a duplex a primary, right? Not an ADU. So I just wanted to make sure that if we're trying to get after this fair housing that we provided this. And I picked the six because it's something that actually did get discussed.
Yes.
And the no, and the cap, no cap got discussed at planning commission as well. They came down on a cap, but it was discussed. So I'm trying to keep this also within the things that have been discussed and not.
Can you remind me when it, I can't remember now where we landed on the ad hoc committee. Did we, I mean, we sort of talked about it, but do we propose a cap or did we, did we suggest the cap when we came brought into planning? Or did we just sort of have it as a, as a, for your program?
We had 12 units coming out of the housing.
Okay, so that was.
We weren't calling it a cap at that point, but we were, it was, we were focused on the sites inventory. It was really, that's when we thought it was on the sites inventory too.
Right. I mean, you know, given that we were, I mean, we were calling it a pilot, we weren't calling it, I mean, we were saying that, you know, if it worked out, we would continue with it. So we were sort of, I think, I mean, I, we contemplated the idea of it becoming a long term program. Ideally, yes, we would experiment with it and move on, but.
Can I ask a question? Is that thought of five versus six because six was discussed?
Yeah, I I don't have a hard five, five or six. I I just was trying to get something better than SB nine. But something that we put it within opt in because we have considerably more control over.
Right.
My concern is if we leave opt in out, they're going to come back and say, then you need to increase your SB nine to three or four. And that's going to be some, you know, I mean, because you, you already saw it. They've already hinted what they wanted in the Frankenstein thing. It was SB nine plus one.
Right.
So they're going to just come back, I think, and just say, okay, well, if you're not going to do opt in, then you're going to do it for every lot in the town. I think the opt in is a better choice. Can I ask John a question? John, is there any way to, what, like, say, we, I'm just going to pick six. And, you know, I'm going to pick 120 instead of 135 or whatever it is. But, you know, if you do the math on that, right, I mean, that's like 720 units, right? Which is, you know, three or four times the total number of units we're being asked to produce. Is, is there any way to put a a limit on like the total number of units that were being asked to produce? I mean, that, you know what I'm asking is the thing they're asking here in all of these, and Frankenstein was even worse, is you do the math and it's, you know, it's five or six X what we're actually being asked to produce. So are there, do you think there's any mechanism for doing that without the sort of hard cap that we had before?
Maybe that might be a good suggestion. Because under just the opt in program, you'd be for the 134 lots, you'd be looking at an additional 402 units. So maybe saying after 250 units, there would be a cap.
Or something, I don't know.
I don't, I don't know that we will, the town will ever realize that number from a practical standpoint. Or what if we had a cap, just we had a cap for the cycle? What if we had an eight year cap of of 250 or maybe ideally less? But and then the next cycle, we could expand it.
I really got to caution you guys from talking about numbers that double or triple our arena allocation. We want as much housing as our community needs and it's important. But honestly, A, the opt in program was a little risky to put in in the first place. Cara crafted it in a way that was the least likely to create challenge to remove caps because she saw this coming. So going down the road of caps at all is really not a good use of time here. And the optics are going to lock you into something that you really will not want. And the optics are going to lock you into something that you really will not want. So I really don't think that's a wise approach. You know, I, I've disagreed with the process over the last month and a half. I appreciate the intent, but process is there for a reason. And waiting for HCD's fulsome letter back before you know what you're giving up and where Portola Valley will end up, what it will look like after that. That is too, too important to know before you start conceding. There might be five hundred, seven hundred, four hundred units. And planning means that you have to plan that everything you're putting in here will happen. That's why you plan. You can't say, we don't have to worry about that because no one will do it. And, you know, you can change things later. So we don't know what else HCD is going to come up with as well. You don't know what concessions you're really at being asked to made, make. And I'm still not convinced the safety issues have been fully vetted in the context of, you know, seven hundred, six hundred extra units. And so HCD is on the one hand and community members on, on the other, and they'll be surprised to, to see this coming. I'm not, I, I, I'm just offering these comments for a different perspective. I know this is, we're all exhausted with this process and the two members of the subcommittee in particular, I respect everything you're saying completely. But I come in with a different perspective and I'll, I'll let you guys keep going. But I, I personally think going up to a six unit per lot, you're going to end up with a Portola Valley no one recognizes. So I'll, I'll, I'll be quiet because I think the rest of you need to decide what path you want to go.
So where do we go from, from here?
I mean, we can submit it without the opt-in, but I'm, I'm almost certain it will get rejected.
Well, I, so, so one thing I wanted to ask, and Judith, I, you know, I understand your perspective absolutely. You're right that we have been at this for a long time. And so I guess if we play it forward and we take opt-in out altogether, or no, what are you, you're suggesting that? What would your path be forward?
Unless someone can tell me that the opt-in program won't cause the same mish, mischief again, that will, will be told legally or administratively, we can't, we can't manage it. I would take it out because we've seen what happened. I had been hopeful and that's why I initially was on board completely with version four. No problem, the community showed what it wanted. I was uncomfortable with it. But now I think it's just a wedge that will be used against us. So I, I would take it out unfortunately, unless somebody can tell me I'm misunderstanding what the legal framework is.
And Judith, is that, so you would, would you put forward adoption of the housing element? Just with, with, with draft four changes without opt-in altogether?
Yeah, I mean, my, my preference would have been if we had a mobility option that were just an enhancement of something else, I would have liked that. But that's too much to ask us, given the timeframe we've had. And, you know, unless it were very just taking something and expanding it, which I don't see possible to be honest. I think the community process is there. I'm, I'm not saying I have a solution here. I just have a visceral reaction that this is not the way.
I guess my concern is I think you take opt-in out and the whole thing is dead on arrival and then.
Well, it's dead on arrival for mobility. Like let's, right, we have no, right, absolutely. And that's actually encouraging, like in the middle of all this. We, we have one day before we got this feedback that we were all feeling really good and aligned. And like you, we know where we're going and we still have uncertainty, but we're going to manage it and we're going to start executing. And honestly, trying to do a quick adjustment just before the deadline for something like this, when you don't know this is the final demand from the other side, I don't see that being a solution.
My concern is if we do that, we have, we're submitting a housing element that has no dispersment, which is what the town community wanted.
Is that correct? I mean, I know this is the way you're thinking about it is this was the linchpin for dispersment. John, are there other aspects already in here? I don't know. This is an honest question.
Not on a site inventory standpoint.
If I can call on our consultant Curtis Banks, I think he's been sharing with us the other elements of our housing program that try and achieve mobility. Curtis, are you online still?
Yes, I am, John.
Can you, can you go over, I know you've talked in our meetings a few times about this is coupled with some other elements of the housing element that sort of address mobility. Can you comment on those?
Quite sure I'm understanding what you wanted. Your, your question, I think the, the question of whether there is sufficient mobility from HCD's standpoint, and they've brought this up in other communities, is in the case of, in specific to Portola Valley, that the units identified particularly for the low-income units, but the two clustered at the edges of the community. And they were looking for units to be dispersed more throughout the community. And as, as been said, above and beyond what would be allowed under state law for ADUs or SB nine. And this has come up in other communities and you've seen in other communities what they've been, uh, been required to do to address this issue, which is to open up the single-family neighborhoods and provide more opportunities in those neighborhoods.
Cur, Curtis, um, maybe I'm misrecalling, but I thought there was some document that said, here are examples of mobility programs. Some of them included things I don't think we can do, like vouchers for certain things. But that, what I'm asking for is, is there, what are the tools other than opening up? Like other than the opt-in program is, that we might already have. And if the answer is nothing, that's the answer. That's fine.
I mean, I think some communities have allowed duplexes or triplexes, but on more lots than would be allowed under the opt-in program. So whether it be throughout a community or within some areas that are dispersed through the community. So it, it's more than just options. I mean, you could look for other, I don't think you want to, but you could look for other sites that would allow housing. But you've been through a very extensive program to try to find.
No, no, no. I don't even want to go there. What, what I was asking for is to achieve mobility support. Like, is there anything that's more? Like, like make.
If I could, and maybe Curtis can jump in. I, I think programs like cohousing and home sharing do, you know, speak to that mobility element. And I don't know whether those would be sufficient in our housing element, but I just wanted to flag that.
Okay.
That's what I was thinking of.
Helps, that gives me a better understanding. We already have those in the housing element. And basically HCD has said that is not sufficient.
Right.
And that's consistent with what they have said in other housing elements that have similar programs like home sharing and other things that, that alone, those are great pieces to include, but isn't sufficient on their own to be the entire solution.
I mean, my understanding is, again, this goes back to the early days. They, their motivation and their intent is to open up the single-family lots to multifamily housing throughout, you know, town.
Yeah, yeah.
In a nutshell. So that's why when we were in the ad hoc housing element committee, when we were thinking about that goal, how would we do that the Portola Valley way is what we used to say. And that dispersment strategy that we came up with to be able to do that was opt-in because it enabled us to do it with more local control than SB nine. And so that was, you know, where we landed in terms of that and why. And without it, I just don't know what are, what are they, you know, if we don't put it in there.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll say no because we don't have mobility and then what?
We can't predict that they're going to accept though. Like that's impossible right now, based on what I've seen and the past interactions and behavior. We can all have a different view on that, but that's where I'm coming out. And, you know, Bob Adams' idea of submitting what we're prepared to do and, you know, forcing a back and forth in terms of on paper requirements that you might actually be able to test out, like sending us language that doesn't make sense, not okay. We're not supposed to adopt that. We can't. So what do we do? It's hard. So I, I tend to think that we're, we're more in than out of the range of what they can accept. And it doesn't make sense to me, but it's in their full right that they submit a new requirement in mid-December that we've not been aware of the sensitivity for. And now they're expecting us to take language that makes no sense. I can't do that. So I'll, again, I'm going to turn it over to you guys to.
Well, I, I agree with you on that. I don't, I wouldn't take their language.
Yeah.
No. I mean, I think to me, there's, there's three options. There's not approve anything and go back to drawing board for some part of this. There's submitted without the housing, without the opt-in, which I, I think is almost certain to get rejected. And then we're back to where, you know, back to, we're, we're doing this again in, in four, six or 12 weeks. Or we, you know, sort of take a shot here, we craft something that we could be comfortable with, you know, and that's, that's somewhat close to what we've discussed. Not going to be perfect, but it's going to be close to what was discussed over the last two years. I mean, that's where I'm at. I, you know, I just like, I think, you know, Craig's idea of, of, you know, eliminate that comp, that blend thing and, and come back with an option of saying, we will, you know, we'll take the cap away. You know, yeah, I, I, your point is well-taken, but I also think this is kind of ultimately the goal of HCD. I think they are trying to, to open up more properties, almost all properties to multifamily housing.
I know. I can't be the person that accepts that. So we're going to disagree.
I guess if, if, I guess what I'm saying is if we're going to take either of the options where we don't, you know, where if we're not, if we're not going to take that shot at something they might approve, what are we going to, I mean, how are we going to do this better in the future? And if there were sort of some other option that, if, if, if there was an option that was going to take us two months to, to, to flesh out and we come back and we were certain, we were confident getting approved, I'd feel differently. But I just, I feel like if we stopped now and went back for six weeks, we'd come back with something very similar to what's on the table right now.
And, and I understand the exhausts after there. I really do.
I still just have more questions than answers. I'd, I hate to say it. There, the, this is, I believe that this is the place here in the town council where we ask the hard questions, the really hard questions. A, a real conversation that asks things like, well, is this inevitable? Are we, are we, will we have to do this? Is there any way of getting around this in the future? Say the legislation changes, does it change? Or are we stuck because we've said yes to this at this moment? If there's something on the ballot in 2024, which there's something proposed, are we stuck with whatever we've been forced into this unequal conversation to accept? That's one thing that, I mean, one sort of question I, I throw out there. But I, part of that is what happened to the, to the sunrise provision? Is that still in there? Is, are there, are there, is there flexibility that, that this can adjust to possible acquisitions and all that kind of stuff that we've been talking about for so long? So how, how much, how deep are we getting into the cement is what I'm wondering with this.
Well, well, we're working with the housing laws that are in place right now. And those could change, you know, by the legislature and the governor at some point in the future, or even the voters of California. But what I hear from councils is that you're trying to develop an idea that you might substitute for the opt-in program being proposed by HCD tonight to see if, if you would agree to including that in, in hopes of getting something submitted. I have one idea that I can share and, and free to debate it or tell me I'm out in left field somewhere. But what if we craft something that doesn't mash together opt-in and SB nine, but recognizes the potential for accessory dwelling units. But then pivoting off of what council member Taylor mentioned, kind of require that the future rules that are going to govern, you know, the, the site development and the architectural standards will guide or, or encourage more of a cluster development, which is something I've heard mentioned over and over again. So I'm thinking of, and this is again, just my idea, we, we take out that first paragraph that S that HCD has put in. Uh, we don't call this a, we, we don't call this a, uh, well, it gets rid of that by combining the S, taking out that first paragraph. But we, we replace that paragraph with a paragraph that reads, properties that are eligible for this program may be developed with four, four primary housing units developed in a cluster with attached ADUs allowed for, for two of the four, four primary housing units. That way you're getting six housing units potentially on the site in a cluster development. You're having the ADUs attached to the four primary units. So it's still from a visual standpoint, potentially looking like four single-family homes on, on the site or a combination of two duplexes on the site. That way you're not, we're, we're taking out the, the bashing together of SB nine and opt-in program. We're simply calling this an opting, opt-in program with potential for a couple of ADUs. And going back to the original four units.
Yeah, I think that was the direction kind of that I was hearing discussed here. So, um, I, I think there's, just to be clear, I think there's broad consensus that nobody wants the Frankenstein. So that one, and so really what we're just noodling with is opt-in as it is currently with no cap or opt-in plus is what I would say, you know? And so if it's opt-in plus, what is the plus? And I guess my question is, do we think we need a plus in order to get approval? I feel like they're going to say yes. They're going to want.
I think that's what they were saying with that.
Right, right. It's, and it's too much identical in terms of unit production to SB nine. And so I think they're trying to get a smidge more. And so I think it's the question of what's the smidge? And I don't know how, how we get to that. Mary, it's, I, I mean, Judith, I respect that, that you're out. Mary, are you still open to this or?
I have a hard time with this.
Okay, so we all do.
The opt-in, I mean, I now understand how they're using the opt-in. And I think they're really using it against us. They, they really are. They, they we, they've weaponized it. It was, it was an in-fa gesture we made to try and see how works. How, how does it look? How much control can we do? What, what, how will this work? How will this be rural? Because certainly we're not the first community who's ever had to face increasing population pressures in a rural situation. And many, all across the world, people have been able to do it. They've been able to do it creatively, not by just sort of arbitrary legislation. In a very unesthetic and very eclectic sort of mishmash. So I, I'm basically been struggling with this all along. I, I, I just see what they've done to the opt-in. And I think that, that's just the way they're going to push it through.
I, I, I disagree with you. I, I think, I think their goal is mobility. This is what we, we were calling dispersion, but it's now being called mobility. And if we hadn't, I mean, we proposed the opt-in and I think if we hadn't, they would have come back and said something like expand SB nine. I think they would have come back with something else. I think they would have come, I mean, I think this question of mobility was there no matter what. And if anything, I think they took our opt-in program and actually liked it and just said, do more of it. You know, it's, it's, I mean, it's, I, you know, it's, it's putting us in an awkward situation. But I also think that, that it's sort of, I, I, if we don't do the opt-in program, we'll be doing something else to improve mobility. And then, you know, that's something else. I don't know what it is. Cause I don't know how many more units we, how many more lots we can expose to SB nine. I don't know what, what else we can, can, can push for more production. I don't know what, what else we can, can, can push for more production throughout town. And this was an alternative to concentrating more things in certain neighborhoods, which was, you know, one of the things people were very upset about in the first place. So I, I mean, you know, it's, um, I think one way or another, they're going to insist on that, that expanded mobility. And when people have gotten innovated about solving their housing prices, they've usually done it through increased density. Again, not something we all ever contemplated when we took this job, but that has been the solution historically. So.
So I'm just trying to figure out for those of us that are open to building consensus. I think there's consensus, some consensus to keep the opt-in in there. And with no cap, I'm looking down this way, sorry. Correct. And the question is, do we want to propose? What, what would we propose for the plus? And I'd like to do as minimal as possible. I don't know if you do four with one ADU. I mean, it's either four with one ADU or four with two ADUs.
So I, I'll weigh in. I mean, so, so first of all, the nod to Judith, I would say if we can find an opt-in plus and that gets rejected, then I think I'm ready to go back to get our state representatives involved. And, and we basically pull HD, HCD to the table.
So I'm actually meeting with Josh on Friday and with Mark on Thursday, next Thursday.
Yeah. So I think, I think that's got to be, I mean, if, if we can't craft something tonight, or if the thing we craft, they just say it's still not good enough, then I, I think we need to move to a different strategy. So given the opt-in plus, I don't have a strong feeling. Six feels right to me. I was thinking of it as, you know, if it's three duplexes, I mean, as long as we can, in the program say, and it's got to be clustered. That puts holds it away from the property lines. It, in basically the parking and stuff all gets concentrated with the cluster. That feels to me a lot better than a lot more SB nine stuff where people are just dividing lots and, and kind of building what they want in the constraints of stuff. So.
And they have a four foot setback.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So certainly for the ADUs.
SB nine.
For the primary as well?
I thought so. That was.
Okay, I'm not sure of that, but, but in any case, yes, I mean, the point still holds, which is I think the opt-in is going to our program would be more in keeping with our aesthetic. The fact we have a one acre limit means that we're actually limiting the number of parcels where SB nine doesn't, other than the safety stuff. So you know, I, I can go along if, if you guys can figure out what you're comfortable with in the opt-in plus. For me, six primaries or some combination of primaries and ADUs. It doesn't make much difference to me personally. Um, I'm, I'm having a hard time seeing the difference because, I mean, the ADUs in some ways are worse because they don't require parking.
Don't require what?
Parking.
Yeah.
Right. Um, and it means that they're owned by one owner. And I don't know if that's a good thing or not. Um, so, so I, I guess I'm open here, but, but I'm, six feels right to me. Five feels like it's not enough different. But I, like I said, I'm, I'm willing to go with some kind of opt-in plus.
Yeah, I was sort of, I, I guess the thing about six is it feels just realistic in terms, I mean, we have to make a plausible case that this will actually incentivize some more things to be, some more units to be developed. And I think four doesn't feel like enough of an incentive for developer. Six feels better. You know, it's, it's a compromise between the four and the eight.
I mean, John, one, one thing, and Judith asked this earlier, I mean, we can, we could say for the opt-in plus that it doesn't apply to an SB nine. Like you could say, you can pick SB nine or you can pick opt-in, but you can't do both. Right? We, we could put that in our opt-in. Like I understand we can't limit SB nine, but we can limit what the, how the opt-ins apply. Is that correct?
I understand you could, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Is that fairly known because we would be taking away a state right by local ordinance?
But in return, I think you're giving someone the opportunity.
Yeah, but, but to even get there is my question.
Well, but I'm saying if you want to choose SB nine, you can do SB nine. We're not going to stop you.
No, I get it. I get, I get the point, but you're trying by local ordinance to take away an SB nine if they want to do an opt-in and there might be some legal I don't know.
I think I'm trying to do something different. I think I'm trying to say you can do SB nine. We're going to take away the opt-in from you if you choose SB nine. Well, it's slightly different than what you said. I meant, I'm trying to convert it in a, in a way that it's, I'm not taking anything away from SB nine. I am taking away from opt-in.
I think that's certainly how we would frame it to HCD. Yeah.
Okay, am I hearing, I, I think what we're hearing is consensus around six.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and whether we do it four and two or six and some combination of primaries and ADUs. I'm, I don't feel strongly about that.
I don't either.
The argument for doing six primaries would just be to give a little more legs so that it looks, it's something that HCD looks at and thinks, I mean, it's just, you know, something that looks, gives a little more plausibility just because to me gives a slightly better chance of being accepted. Um, if you want to, I mean, we could, we, we're, we're increasing our risk. If we, four plus two just has a lower chance of, of, of passing.
And I think what I would propose is we just say six dwellings. Yeah. And then, you know, if you want to do ADU, I mean, if that's what the developer decides somehow ADU because it costs, they can do an ADU, right?
Right.
Feel hard about that. It's just, I want to limit it to it's six. It's not six plus, then you can add on a bunch of other stuff, like it's fixed.
Yeah.
Six period, six units.
Clustered and subject to our review.
Ca- Karen, I'm sorry, you can't, we just gotta, we
Okay, yep. Um, I have a question for you guys to consider since it's not mine. But JADUs are cheaper. If you're looking for mobility, they are a tool that might be perceived as more likely low cost.
I think that's a good point. However, if we just say six units, people can do whatever they want, right?
But you may not be able to count it. I mean.
But we're only not going to count this anyway.
Well, that's the other point. If you guys are going to lean into this, you ought to consider actually putting that back in because you.
Sorry, putting, putting which back in?
The, the Rena chart ten, the, the units that you have. I don't see why.
I don't understand why they're, I, I, that, that's a good point though. Um, Judith, I don't understand. Do you guys have any insight as to why we're not, so originally, way back, we were considering putting SB nine units in our sites inventory. And at the time, because we didn't have any SB nine parcels, they said you cannot put them because you have no evidence to suggest that you will, will have them because you have no trajectory. And so that's why we didn't put SB nine in our sites inventory. And then we were, we were able to put opt-in. So what's confusing to me now is why are they saying opt-in can't be part of the sites inventory?
Very weird.
But, but they gave us more ADUs.
Yeah, which is before they were saying you couldn't do ADUs. I couldn't believe that. Yeah.
So I guess my question, no, just from a bracket, why do we care? I mean, if they gave us ten one place or another, and if we, if we build ten of the opt-in, they're going to, we, we still get to count them against our total numbers. It's just, we're not going to get to use them as the justification for we've come up with enough programs.
Right.
Well, there's no net loss and like if you lose the ones in the chart, you have to go find them. I, I mean, you know this better than.
The buffer is already really tight. I mean, the other thing that's crazy is they were insistent on that 15% buffer and now they don't really care. So it's, it's moving. It's moving. Yeah. So are, do you guys have? What, how would we go about crafting this?
Well, um, I'm thinking we can eliminate that paragraph, that second paragraph that HCD provided and simply say properties that are eligible for this program may be developed with six dwelling units, period.
So can you let us know what page you're on?
And I'll just interrupt, sorry, John, to say that I think our housing consultants are ready with the page citations. Our housing consultants are ready with the pages.
I'm sorry, couldn't see that part.
Hi Carla.
Hello Carla.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So pages 136 and 137 look like that's where the text changes are in the sites. I think it's at the bottom of page 137 where we added that paragraph that John was just mentioning from HCD.
Yep, it's highlighted. So we'd replace that paragraph. We would take out the take out the, the, the cap and then leave in the, the metrics that HCD wanted.
And you can point to what you would delete.
Yeah, we're going to call it up right now. 136 of the packet or of?
Of the actual housing draft for A, 137, page 137 of draft for A.
If you keep going.
There's a link to it. Yeah, there's a link to it in the packet under the attachments. Link is on page fifty-two. On, on page fifty-two of the packet, there is a link to the full housing.
So where, what page?
Page fifty-two of the packet has a link to the full housing element.
So what we have on the screen right now, this would be the, the paragraph we would substitute with the language I just used, properties that are eligible for this program may be, maybe, maybe developed with six dwelling units, period.
And then here.
That would get crossed out.
And then, so it would just be, you, you'd get rid of prop, although you'd keep the language, the town commits to developing and implementing processes, so on and so forth.
Right.
Well, then you'd have to strike out the la, that last sentence because it says, um, implementation of this program, including property owners who are eligible to combine SB nine.
Yes, we would. And then on page 138, we would keep the.
Targets. You keep those targets in there?
Yes, the three low, six moderate and 12 above moderate. And then adjust the language where the where is needed.
Okay, so by deleting that earlier paragraph, you got rid of the SB nine, three plus seven business?
Yes.
Okay, so that's gone. Is there a place where the one acre minimum, is that still, I mean, that's, that was in the document. So that's still there someplace?
Yeah, that would be, um, the one thing we would have to change is program one dash three that is listed on page 141 of the housing element. We would need to modify that one reference to no more than four dwelling units per lot to no more than six dwelling units per lot.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then the no cap is sort of implicit because it's just not called, called anymore in this current document.
That's, that's correct.
And then what would we have to put in to say that you couldn't, if you were doing an SB nine lot, then you couldn't use the opt-in. We need some language to cover that, right? You're, you're not on.
Yes, I would suggest putting that language in to make it clear in terms of the intent. So if we could add that to this, um, I think it probably goes in this program.
Yes. So we could put it in the paragraph I just announced. So this properties that are eligible for this program may be developed with six dwelling units. Use of SB nine in conjunction with this program is prohibited.
I think we were saying, well, I, yeah, I just think we want to say, um, let's see, projects that use SB nine would not qualify for opt-in. Just to flip the emphasis perhaps.
I thought we were going to say the flip side, opt-in.
Oh no, that's, yeah, when, if you do SB nine, you don't qualify for opt-in. Like, we're not saying you can't do SB nine, but we are saying that we're going to win it. Yeah, I, I, I think that works. And then is, is an appropriate place in the program to say something about non-ownership? Because I also think that that's an important thing that we've added to the opt-in. Because SB nine requires, um, the owner lived there for three years. We're saying an opt-in that a developer could develop this complex.
Right.
So I think someplace that S, I want to make sure that HCD understands that we're putting forward a strong proposal here. So is there a place to make that point? Because I don't think, you know, I, I don't think they're going to guess because the wording isn't there.
It's, it's an aspect of opt-in. So where, where would that go?
That could go right at the end. We could do a sentence.
Isn't that, wasn't that inherent in the option though? I thought that was already.
It, it was, I, I want to make the point because I'm, I don't, it wasn't, it was there implicitly, but I don't think it was there explicitly. We're not changing, I'm not changing anything. I'm just making it.
Talk about a roadmap for developers to come in. All right.
But it was there anyway. I mean, are you saying that they wouldn't have figured it out?
We're not changing the rule. So why do you need to affirmatively?
Well, it's, I agree. I think if it's, if there's nothing in there saying, I mean, there's no, if there's no ownership requirement, that's the same as saying anyone can do it.
Okay. So maybe, John, we don't put it in the program, but maybe you, when you're talking to H, the reviewer, you make it clear that.
That these can each be owned independently.
And that, that seems, I, I take, I take my attorney friend's point.
I, I believe we also need to make one minor modification to the land use element.
Sorry, say that again?
I think we need to make one minor modification to the land use element as well.
Oh yes, to reflect, we should the, um, reflect, amend the, the land use element to reflect the modifications to the opt-in program.
I believe that's on page eight of the land use element, which, um, I don't know if that's easy to pull up. I believe it's attached to the staff report. Right.
Carla, could you pull up page eight of the housing element?
Sure. They're in the land use.
Land use element, sorry.
You all see that?
You do it more.
Yeah. So we would change this to be six. Is that right?
Yes.
Previously it was four.
Right. That's it.
Why is it called low density? Thread the needle. I'm just, um, make a suggestion that we may want to put the SB nine language in here. I'm going to throw it out for consideration. We're, we're editing on the fly, which I never like to do, but, um, we, we could consider saying, you know, this program, program will permit comma for qualifying projects that do not use SB nine comma up to six units on a single family. On a single family lots, meeting prescribed screening criteria.
Why is it called low density? Whoops, you've gone too far.
Oops, sorry.
Opt-in housing program, low density.
It's under multi-family. I think, is that because of the size? Because low, medium, less than one acre?
Right.
No, this is one to two.
I think Mary was asking the first. I, I think Mary was asking the first sentence on that page.
Oh, right here.
Right there, exactly.
You, you know, if you're doing this on the fly, I just want to note, this is bad process, but it looks to me like that language that we've struck was actually intended to say. More about the maximum of twelve units rather than an affirmative number of units. So the other two don't talk about units. Do you even need this? I mean, I don't understand why you would say it here and not in the others. So. Editing on the fly is not my preference, and I know we're trying to get this done. I think you're leaning in too much to try to do too much, and you don't understand the implications. But you should consider that and make a decision on whether you need that.
Well, can I ask the question? Is there, I think we know what the intent is. Is there some way that we can appoint a subcommittee of the council to review some fi, sorry, s- some final language? Um, that's worked on by the planning director and the turn, town attorney? I mean, because I think we're pretty much there. It's just if there's a few, because I, I trust Judith's intuition that editing on the fly is always a little bit scary. So, I mean, is there any way or do we have to have the exact?
I believe we need to submit this by Friday, um. Uh, but, you know, there could be, you know, a lot of times at these council resolutions, maybe the language is in there right now, provides, um, uh, some authorization to staff to make, you know, conforming, you know. Minor, minor amendments consistent with the intent of the council.
I would be comfortable with that.
I mean, this one, I think, you know, to council, my vice mayor's point, um, I, I see the point in terms of whether we need this at all, um, given that this is, um, not. Th- this was intended for the, the cap or the, or the pilot program.
What's the downside of taking it out?
It, it's intended for, um, internal consistency between the housing element and the land use element. You know, at the same time, I don't know that the, the housing element is inconsistent with the land use element. I don't have all the background on this particular, um. Provision of the land use element. Um, I don't know, I'm gonna see if, um. Carla or Curtis have any insight on. Where this came from.
What is the heading for this series of, um. Items? You go up, up further on page seven, what's the? Heading title? No, can you keep going up, Carla?
Well, the.
Oh, standards. So this reference is standards. So all these are supposed to be standards. So if you go down back to the opt-in program. Good, can you go back up a little bit to four?
Multi-family low.
Family loans.
And then go back up to the chart to see what's listed for that. Multi-family low is two to four. That's where.
That's where that ties in.
You have something to do.
In. Uh, it kind of messes up our, um. But it's multi-family.
Right, that's what's different. This is not being zoned as a multi-family lot. This is different than what's in that table. So that's why I'm getting confused and I'm wondering. Um.
Well, it's not really a standard. It's, it's just a.
I don't know that it needs to be here to the original point, I think.
That's, that's what I'm. I think we should strike it.
Yeah, that's what I, I agree. It was in there for a different reason. Now that reason no longer exists.
It's just saying, here's our opt-in program and you can have six units.
It's not about, it's not a zoning. Yeah, is everybody comfortable with that?
Well, I'm not because I think you're going to.
Generally.
No, and even on this, I don't know the implications. I don't have time to do that in this meeting, so it's a process point for me.
Understood. All right, um, there were other items, um, that were highlighted in blue, you guys, on the draft four A that we haven't discussed. And I just, to be thorough, um, didn't know if anybody has. I reviewed these with John and I'm comfortable with them, um, but I didn't, I want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity, um, before we move beyond this.
I didn't have anything. I, I, I had read through it and did not see anything, but I was comfortable with them. The blue, I mean, just all the changes, this is, and you're, specifically, we're talking red, the packet, page fifty-three. Right.
Um, I'm on the housing element, draft four A. I'm, there's, so as the packet described in the housing element, anything that was highlighted in blue is new since the planning commission.
Okay, I'm looking at page fifty-three where draft number four modifications recommended by the planning commission, which is page fifty-three of the packet. That's where I'm.
So this isn't in the packet because you've got to click on the link to get to the housing element.
Yeah, I've got the housing element opened separately, but I, I thought that document was a summary of what had been changed.
To mine, I, I had thought that, um. See what? I mean, this has been in the packet, I assume, um, yeah. Nope, there's other, you want me to go page by page? Well, I'll scroll down.
Are you talking about the packet or the housing?
It's in the housing. You gotta be in the housing element at this point.
Okay, page sixty of the housing. Yeah, okay, yeah.
Believe it's the pilot.
Yeah.
It's page one oh five of the actual four A housing element. So. Housing element to me.
Yeah.
So guys, just so we're kind of going through this together, I do think it's important that everybody's on four A, which is the draft of the housing element. So if you're in that document, um, per the packet, everything that's highlighted in blue.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure if it's.
Okay, perfect. So I guess my question remains, um. There's other areas that there was, um, updated language. We just reviewed, um. The first part on page, um, one thirty-nine, there's in program one dash one A. But this is just adding language from SB nine, or I'm sorry, from SB thirty-five that already is a law. Pardon me? So they're just kind of adding that language in. That's already existing law. Um, on page one forty-two. It's repetitive of things that we've already reviewed. This is, you'll, you guys will make these updates everywhere. Um, one, yeah, one, one forty-one, one forty-two on a housing element. And we popped out of it somehow again, oh.
No, the, the page numbers on the housing element on the document are different from the page numbers you get in the browser window. And so.
Yes.
Page one thirty-nine on the housing element is page one sixty in the browser window.
Correct, yes, sorry.
Yeah, I was trying to.
So I was using the numbers on the actual housing element document, not the browser, sorry.
Yeah.
I can use the PDF pages. So I don't want to go pa, page by page. I'm assuming, I just wanted to. To make sure that people were, that there were no additional comments beyond.
They were addressed.
Okay. Um. Given that, are we at the point where we're, um, ready to make a motion?
Yeah. Um, with the changes, we had changed, with the modifications we've, we've discussed here, uh, I've moved to. Uh, authorize the planning interim planning director to submit, um, the draft four A with changes to HCD, um, by Friday. Or, well, the, in a, it, we've complied with a deadline, but.
If I, just, just to clarify, so you're making a motion to adopt the resolution, um, that's adopting the housing element and giving us direction to submit to HCD along with the changes.
With the, with the changes we have now laid out here, yes.
To the housing and the, um, land use element, yeah.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second that, and I would just like to add Catherine's with staff having authorization to make changes that are, I'll let you use the right wording, but. Consistent with intent or, what, what was the exact wording you used?
Um, m- minor, uh, conforming changes consistent with the intent of council.
Jeff, are you okay with that?
Yes, I am okay with that.
And I, I second that motion.
Okay. Well, Kavo? Council member Alves?
Aye.
Council member Hefte? Council member Taylor?
Aye.
Vice mayor, uh, Hesco?
No.
Mayor Wernicke? Yes. Motion approved. All right, um, does anybody need another bio break before we move on to, uh? Um, not much. I just thought I would ask, so. Now I've lost my document. Hold on one second. I think, I think we are at, um, uh, council liaison reports, um. Does anybody have any, um, updates that they'd like to share that are not included in written format?
I've got a couple of quick ones, um, so wildfire preparedness committee, um, in conjunction with the Woodside Fire Protection District. Basically held a meeting to go through the defensible space ordinance, the twenty twenty-three. Um, so Kim, the new fire marshal, came, um, and basically discussed the ordinance, answered people's questions. Um, one thing I would say is this is moving on a fairly fast track. So she's taking comments now. She'll probably integrate those comments sometime between the first and the ninth of February. Um, put out another revision and then at the end of, um, February, we'll probably go to the first reading for the, um, district, to the district board. And then a month later, the second reading, and then a month later than that, it's enforced. And to be clear, we don't have any direct authority here. It's not going to come to us. This is strictly within the fire district's purview. Um, but Kim has been good about taking comments, so I, I would recommend that all residents, um, if they have a chance, take a look at this and make sure they understand, um, what's being proposed under this defensible space ordinance.
And Craig, are there public comment opportunities, like not us, but, but if the public wants to weigh in, should they look at it and? What's the window if you know, and if you don't know, where do they look?
So I, I don't want to speak directly for Kim, so I want to be careful. Um, so my understanding was Kim will be taking comments on it up through, like I said, somewhere between February first and February ninth. I think she can go probably as close, as far as the ninth. Um, and then there's room for public comment at the first reading. But to be honest, I mean, once you're down that path, it's a lot more locked and loaded. I mean, it's, you know, unless there's something really egregious, it's probably gonna just keep down that path. Um, but Kim has been very good about trying to take people's comments and respond to them, so, um, you know, I, I would definitely recommend that people take a look at it.
Can, can we put that out to the town, just saying, hey, if you're interested, rather than, you know, the town's doing something? That would be helpful.
That would be great.
There was also, uh, do you wanna, did you, did you mention at the beginning, the event that she had here?
That was, that's the event I'm talking about. Yeah, that, that was, it was sort of a. It was community outreach and discussion, so that, yeah, that was the, I'm sorry, if I wasn't clear, it was a joint meeting between WPC and, and, and Kim.
I probably, it was probably just lost on me.
Yeah, so no, but thank you for clarifying. No, so it was a public meeting. We had pretty good attendance. There were probably ten, ten or fifteen people in the audience and another at least fifteen, there's at least thirty people in attendance. Um, so. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and the, the good thing is, and I've been talking with Kim about this, is the good thing is we're getting word out. So that people aren't going to go, oh, but nobody ever told me. And, you know, there's going to be a few people that say that anyway, but, but Kim's doing her best to try to get this out there to make sure that people have a chance to, um, participate. Um, the only other thing I'd add, then WPC had their regular meeting. Um, the only, the, one thing that came out of that that was interesting was apparently. We have an ordinance right now where our deck ordinance is written in such a way that there are no. Materials on this CAL FIRE list that you can actually build a deck with, given our regulations, because apparently there's six, um, things that make up. Acceptable material and we only chose four out of the six, so we sort of made ours more narrowly defined. So I think this is a discussion that will come back to the council, because I think we may want to consider going back to the state standard rather than getting kind of in front of our skis here. Um, and I appreciate that we saw, uh, the, um, wildfire preparedness committee, they've been basically putting time and effort into this, and they've sent something to Sharif. Sharif, that was that, you know, message that Jennifer sent you, so we can follow up on that.
Did you want to mention the evacuation, just a small update on the evacuation?
Uh, sure, I was gonna let you do it, but I'm.
Okay, yeah, um. I'll probably get this wrong. Um, fire marshal is, is, is actually, is currently writing, is sort of, is taking it on to, to rewrite, to write another version of the evacuation plan that will come back, I believe, to EPC. Next, and then, and so it's. Ball step, but some progress is being made.
Yeah, I think the, the process is gonna be, she's reworking the format to make it more of a plan. Um, but taking all, all of our work from EPC and sort of finding the right places to sort of insert it. Um, it will come to the subcommittee, the evacuation subcommittee, the council, and an evacuation subcommittee of the EPC. To sort of discuss and make sure, like, did we, did we get everything in here? Did we miss anything? Does this seem like the right thing? And then it will go to EPC and then I assume come back to the council. But there is good progress, um, and I'm really pleased that the districts involved, because at, at the end of the day. Most of the evacu, the primary evacuation plan is wildfire. I mean, there's certainly other ones, but if you kind of get that one right, there's a lot of others that sort of follow closely behind.
Council member, your microphone, sorry.
Uh, the, uh, geologic safety committee has a evacuation subcommittee. Uh, and they've done a, a very detailed document, which they presented to the evacuation subcommittee and to the fire department. Locating where our geologic faults are that will. That, uh, affect evacuation. So that, that's in process. I hope the, at least didn't. That document is being looked at in the process.
Yeah, I'm sure there'll be a place to, to incorporate that. Um, the, the primary part of the evacuation plan is more. What are the roles? Who's in charge? I mean, that's, that's, that's the basic format, and then there's appendices that get to, you know, where the, where the gates. And I think if, if I understand what you're saying is, you know, the faults and some of that other stuff, I think that stuff that we'll probably go in an appendix.
Right.
Um, to make sure that the professionals who are running the evacuation understand that. A, these are things they need to deal with in an evacu, in the actual evacuation, but also for pre-planning.
Right. There's no geologic safety committee in Woodside and, and, uh, so they, they are using our, the work that we're doing.
Um, yeah, no, I still have to do my updates. Um, any, Jeff, do you have any updates? Um, so I just wanted to update everybody on the process, um, with the Hawthorns Mid-Penn project, um. We haven't had a meeting in quite some time, but they have scheduled the future meetings, um, there's a meeting on February twenty-ninth, March twenty-fourth, and June thirteenth, um, at that point, their, um, expectation is that they'll have a rec, recommendation from the, from the, um, working group, and that they would put that forward to their internal group, which is an acronym PNC, that I'll be honest, right now, I can't remember what it stands for. Um, from there, they will put that forward to their board for a study session, and at that point, because I've been kind of wondering how, when, at what point will it come to us? At that point, after their board has a chance to review it in a study session, it will come to the council in a study session. So likely, the first time that we'll be seeing this at the council level for just a study session is, um, in the fall. So just an update on that process. The other thing, um, Jeff and I are council, are subcommittee for the sheriff's contract. We really haven't been working as a subcommittee, because since Sharif has joined, that, um, work has been taken on by staff, and I know that we have an update, hopefully, on the roll forward, um, on, on the sheriff's contract. So I just wanted to, um, update that from our subcommittee. Um, and then, as I mentioned to you guys in emails, if you have updates from your subcommittees, I kind of want to just bring that practice back, because I think it's good, just a way to keep everybody informed. Um, and so I know that we don't have anything, I, I believe we have an upcoming agenda item for the ad hoc, or I'm sorry, for the, um, post-approval process. So I'm assuming we'll get an update on that then, um, but I'm wondering, I've been hearing, there's maybe been work on the outreach, so I just was curious if you guys could just share with us what's been going on with that subcommittee.
Yeah, that's you and me, Mary, but I wouldn't say, I mean, with the holidays intervening, I think it'll be more productive if we give an update next time. I mean, you tell me. Yeah, feel free. I mean, you and I haven't talked about it, we just got an email.
Free, uh, talk about it.
Right.
Um, which is too bad, but, um.
You sure you don't want to wait?
Okay.
I mean, there's not a rush, is there? Yeah.
Okay, and then the other thing, uh, that you wanted to, it is interesting, though. Um. I will talk to, well, I did talk to her, uh, um, the ethics policy, uh, we haven't really talked about that either. But, but theoretically, we're ready to go now that the staff is there. As far as I'm, as far as I know.
I, I'm just glad to see we're doing the roll forward again, so thank you.
Yeah, and I'm very glad for this, this is a big help.
Great.
Just to be able to open these topics, so, so it, uh, we mystify.
Um, alright, let's take public comment, um, um. Committee liaisons, uh, nobody in the schoolhouse, Rita Comas, um, Zoom.
Hi, uh, thank you for taking my, uh, comments, and since it was all bundled together, I, I'm going to ask the question. On the warrant list, there was a, a ten thousand dollar, uh, payment for evacuation.
Rita, I'm, this needs to be public comment on, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but it needs to be public comment.
Evacuation, it's about the evacuation.
Okay.
And so, and that Craig talked about, and, uh, so I just want to know if, you know, how can we get a report, was that part of it? And, uh, and also, uh, it was just mentioned about the ethics policy, and, uh, and just wondering, wondering, when will the electronic communications policy discussion come back? Is that part of the ethics policy? So those are my, those are my two questions.
Thank you, um, Kristy Corley.
Yeah, regarding the sheriff contract, um, I've asked a few times that those, uh, summaries of accidents and location and injuries be, uh, part of the BPTS, um, report in the agenda and attached to the agenda, and often, it's a verbal report and not an attachment. And so if that can be written in, and sometimes it looks like they're there more often, but last year, there was a lot of absences, so if you could make sure that you write that they are required to come to the BPTS and give a thorough report, that would be appreciated by, um, the residents who drive these roads. Um, and then I'm wondering if we can get, uh, a feeling of the top two parking places that Hawthorns is thinking of, um. And if there's been communication with our, um, planning staff and our, um, town manager, we would like a report on that as well, thank you.
Thank you, Kristy. Alright, I don't see any hands up, any more hands raised or in the schoolhouse, so, um, I'll close, uh, public comment, and, um, I think we, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Alright, meeting adjourned, thank you.